Being seven o'clock, I'll call the December tenth meeting to order. Our agenda this evening starts with visitors, then approval of minutes, acceptance of gifts, Foxborough Cable access, district-wide class size discussion, fiscal nine, fiscal oh-nine budget overview, our Hurry Middle School, Foxborough High School, some district-wide issues, facilities, and transportation, followed by a discussion of the process we'll follow for the special education director search, and then other matters. With that, are there any visitors that would like to make a statement this evening? Yes, sir, please come forward.
That's from Bayon, 153 North Street. Before I read the statement, I want to make a comment. One of the reasons for the request of the written statements was that the committee would formally respond to any questions from members of the community. In my last statement, I had one question only that has not been answered so far. I don't know if I'll ever get an answer, but that's besides the point. Listening to the recording, it reminded me that some years ago, a gentleman named Larry accused Martha and Debbie Lloyd about a vote that took place in executive session. His accusations were false and were consistent with his objective of advancing his candidacy. I challenged him openly, not because he was running for a school committee position against someone I favored more. I did it because it was a lie that attacked your reputation, Debbie and Martha, and I could not just stand by, and also because I would not be in agreement with someone with that kind of behavior as part of a school committee. He tried to present the two of you as reckless and not trustworthy, and that he was in a better option for the school committee. He never proved his claim was true, nor disputed my accusation. His statements are proof of the person that he is. During the last meeting, Dr. Navarro noticed that the minutes of the previous meeting were not accurate. He took a stand and requested that the record be corrected. He did the same for my reputation and had done for yours. Martha, you took offense, now I call the chair's statements a lie. Is my reputation less important than yours? Were the falsehoods of that Larry less damaging than the statements of this Larry? All of this controversy could have been avoided if Mr. Harrington corrected himself when questioned by Dr. Navarro. Yet he chose to ask him to sit down and allow the meeting to continue without correcting the record. Furthermore, upon my return from my trip, I sent an email to the chair, asking for equal time to defend myself, and made it clear that I was mortified by the way I was disparaged. I expected a phone call that would allow us to clear the misunderstanding in a civilized way. What I received was a short note saying that I could voice my opinion during the visitor section. Even after my open accusations and demands for explanations, the chair ignored what had been done to my character. So did you all. Last meeting again, Dr. Navarro was the one that asked that the minutes be corrected to reflect the truth. It is hard to believe that Mr. Harrington did not review the minutes prepared for approval before Monday night. Did he wonder if he should ask for a correction to reflect the truth? Mr. Harrington mentioned that we were making a big issue out of a mistake that happened during a three-and-a-half-hour meeting. Did he forget that the segment in question was the first item that was discussed? Did he forget that it was in the agenda by his own choosing? Did he forget that he had all the information at his fingertips and quoted me verbatim what I had said at least three times? Did he forget that he deviated from his own written comments yet allowed the false statements to stay in the record? At the end, he has the audacity to state that the FEO presents only nonsense on his website and emails. Let it be a precedent, should there be others who dispute the veracity of his statements. If Mr. Harrington is at peace after doing to me what he has done during an open meeting, I fear the thought of what can be done behind closed doors against those under his authority who may disagree with his positions. At this point, I don't need an apology from him. His word has no value.
Thank you very much. You, sir. Any other comments in the visitor section? Hearing none, we'll move on. This next item is acceptance of gifts. I will recuse myself from this section of the meeting, and I will turn it over to the vice chair, Beverly. Beverly, the meeting is done, go.
Actually, Dr. Martis, would you like to lead us through this next section?
Sure, I'd be glad to. It's my pleasure to do this. Tonight, I announce two gifts and some ideas for some future fundraising, which could exceed $100,000, and these are all donated by Judy and Larry Harrington. And along with this is a new initiative driven by members of the school committee with the overall goal of raising about $250,000 to supplement our educational efforts. It would be ideal if we could meet all of our needs through the budget process, but it is not always possible during these tight economic times. Foxborough's a generous community. Look at the funds recently raised for students with critical medical issues, the bid auction in November, the recent donation that we talked about here a few weeks ago by Mr. Estucio, and organizations like the Patriots and Invencers, which make regular gifts to us. The first gift that donated by Judy and Larry Harrington would go to the athletic department. The school committee has advocated for additional fitness equipment for outstanding athletic programs. Foxborough Athletics is an important component in our efforts to teach goal-setting, leadership, teamwork. Unfortunately, funding for fitness training equipment is often deferred, and might have to be again, again, within this tight fiscal 2009 budget that we're deliberating again tonight. Therefore, I ask you to accept a parabody gym system valued at $2,816. The athletic department recommends accepting this gift and will put it to immediate use. The second gift is for the music department. Foxborough's marching band uniforms were purchased over 30 years ago, with some replacements on our uniforms purchased over time, most recently eight of them in 2004. The style is outdated and the uniforms are in poor condition. A marching band the caliber of ours deserves better. Our music program is recognized beyond Foxborough for its success, including the skills it develops within students, such as critical and analytical thinking, creative problem-solving, effective communication, leadership, discipline, and teamwork. We have over 700 grade five through 12 students in band and chorus. Mr. Steve Massey is here tonight, and he has selected a new uniform, and I know we have one of our students, one of our seniors, Andy Groob, who will show us that uniform tonight. And he has obtained an estimate for purchasing 126 uniforms at $54,000. Replacing them for next September requires us to place a purchase order by February, which is unfortunately before any town meeting consideration can be obtained. The marching band has often played in the rain, examples of previous two Thanksgivings in 2005 and '06, and has played in frigid weather at Super Bowls and on Thanksgiving in 2004, so they recall. Yet they don't have overcoats, which would also cost $7,800, making the purchase $62,000. The Harringtons understand the value of the music program and believe the purchase will have a positive impact on our students. Therefore, I ask you to accept a $40,000 cash gift for the new uniforms and overcoats, and I ask you to fund the balance, which will be under $22,000, from a revolving account so that a timely purchase order may be placed for the uniforms and the overcoats. Mr. Jackson suggests funding from the building rental account, which after this request would still have a balance of about $177,000. So I'll start there. I have some other things that I want to say about some future fundraising ideas that have come forward, and I want to try to split these off right now. I don't know if -- Martha?
I just would like to make a comment. I've known Judy and Larry for quite some time, when they lived in Mansfield and when they came to Foxborough and chose this as their new home. I've never met two people who are so sincere, who have so much to offer and so much to give, have done so many things over the years to both of their communities and given, often in an anonymous fashion. I am proud to call you two a friend, and what you're doing for this town, what you're doing for this music system, one of which that your son participated in, has got to be one of the most generous things I've ever seen you do. And I just want to applaud you both for your generosity, and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept these two gifts.
Well, actually, I would -- I think it might be wise if we take two separate motions for the two separate --
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept for the equipment for the gym.
Okay, in the amount of $2,816. Okay. A seconded?
And I'll make the motion to accept the --
The $40,000 for the uniforms for the music department?
We need the additional one with the --
And then, I think we --
Take that as a third.
Take that as a third.
Okay. So take a vote on the first one?
So take a vote on the first one?
The gym?
The gym? Yes, are we? Okay. Four zero.
So before we do the second one, Steve, do you have something you want to say? Do we have a --
Yeah, we want to see the -- we want to see the uniform. We want to know what we're getting. With Miss --
Wow. I'd like to see Mr. Groob, not of them.
Would I do a spin?
The walkway, please, we'd like the full view.
Well, then, I guess we'll have to have a synthetic feel to go along with that. Don't let it go on these uniforms.
I'll just say a few words.
That'd be great.
The goal is to get a classic-looking uniform that will last, hopefully, 25, 30 years like this, last set of uniforms, and look sort of elegant throughout that. Can you take a look? The -- so --
Oh, my dresser.
Still tweaking this a little bit. I think the Foxborough on the side would probably say O U G H. We may not put the large F that's on the back of the overlay. A hundred of those, when you're walking away, is a lot of Fs. A lot of big Fs. But the uniform is such, and this is, you know, high-grade quality, that it has a couple components, and I don't want to take much of your time, but since --
No, that's why I --
So the overlay comes off, and you can wear for a more formal look, like a Memorial Day Parade or something like that. The uniform in this look, which is also a little cooler because it has the minimalist component to it. So it has a little bit of flexibility in that regard, and I think that flexibility would stand up really well for a long period of time, for a lot of different functions. So that's the basic design.
Mr. Massey, what is the material of the new uniform?
Well, it's a blend. It's a wool and a cotton blend. It's the most heavy uniform they make, which they recommend for New England.
Well, the last one's wool, and it lasted 30 years.
The last one's lasted a long time, and, but as you see, the color of those is kind of outdated with our current color code, and the design, the style is a little -- the short waist is the style of the 21st century.
Very impressive.
Do you want to see it again?
Well, it's a different uniform now. It's a different -- it's a different uniform now. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the wardrobe, Mr. Saltso. You did a great job.
What I worry about now, though, is that some of our principals, maybe when they advocate for budget items, may be bringing students along, and I'm a little concerned about that at this point. But thank you. Andy, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unbelievable.
We have a motion.
All right, now.
Kate, I believe you want to -- Make a motion to accept the $40,000 to be used towards the music.
And I second that.
Very good. And we do have --
We just need to take a vote on that.
Oh, sorry, phone.
Okay. Oh, that's good. Forum?
And to supplement the total cost, we do know that we have enough surplus right now in the building rentals, so could I have a motion to --
Before we do that, could -- is it possible to have a discussion?
Sure.
One of the things, and I think that the music uniforms, it's so critical, and I am so much in support of accepting this gift for that purpose, but we have athletic uniforms that serve us three times the amount of students in the music program, and from an equity point of view, I think we should take a look at, we have uniform replacements and programs that have fallen behind just as the music fell behind. We replace them as we had money. And I think, just as the music is in need, we have an athletic program, basketball is currently struggling, many of our cheerleaders had to buy their own uniforms until this year, and I just think that before we take any money out of the building fund, and I support us doing that, I think we need to know, given that we're running deficits and it's a very tight fiscal year, what is the status of the athletic uniforms? Because that's even a greater pool. And a year ago, an inventory management system was put in place, just as we did for textbooks, to make sure we get these uniforms back. And our new athletic director, I know, has been working on that. We also have the locker issue, so I would like to not take it in peace because there's only -- our funds are limited, and we've done so much spending out of the building, the revolving accounts. I'd really like to know, is it $20,000 to finish off the music program? What is athletics? What is that locker? Before we make a decision that we funded a sport, we funded, you know, an item that there isn't equity across the school system. Because I think music, and art, and athletics are all important to student achievement, and I don't think we should take one in tight fiscal times above the other.
Kate, I don't think in the past that any time the athletic department has needed something, that we've always gone ahead. They have it within their budget, and we have, you know, met their needs. This is something that hasn't been done in quite some time, and --
30 years.
30 years. So it's something we need to do at this point, and we'll deal with the other issues when we have to deal with them. And I don't want to hold up one project over the other. We've never held up their projects because the band didn't have anything, and I just don't, I just don't think, I don't feel comfortable waiting to do all this other because they have it within their budgets. I don't see as I'm having a --
Well, actually, Martha, athletics doesn't have it within its budget. Athletics has been flat-funded for a number of years. On the other hand, the operating budgets of both art and music, we've increased the last two years, and I don't have a problem with that because they needed things. We've also, you know, spent, you know, $68,000 on new musical instruments. I'm just saying for equity, and I'm not, I'm just saying, can we have a report on what are the critical needs? Because we have uniforms across all of our sports that are in disrepair, and the replacement program that we have in place and the inventory management system is not keeping up with those, just like we can't keep up with music.
Well, I think it's appropriate for them to come before us and ask for it. This is the first that I'm hearing, and I don't, I just don't feel comfortable with that.
Well, I have a question because you raised about athletic uniforms. The question for me would be, have they been replaced within 30 years? I'm assuming that they have. I know the cheerleading uniforms were replaced this year. I mean, if we want to go line by line on each, you know, team, we can do that, but I think it's very clear that 30 years, you know, is a long time, and the music department has gone without in terms of uniforms. I don't know, you know, if we want to collectively do that, itemize each athletic team, but Chris?
Yeah, one of the things that we can do, I know that the committee knows and the public knows, that we have items tonight for budget review, for FY09 budget review. Athletics is another program that'll be up at our next meeting, our first meeting in January. So we certainly could have a status report, to your question, Kate, about when we've replaced uniforms and when our next replacement process would be worked through. So we certainly could do that. So, you know, we can even separate these two items and still build in the idea that we want to do a replacement. I absolutely agree with that.
There is that time element, though, of February, right? So we would have to do this and get it completed.
We would still have time to do that, and we know, we could say that there was also equity across all, and I just think that that's important.
We have never held up the request for replacement of football uniforms, ever, for another --
When someone comes before us, then we address that issue.
Right.
So I don't --
Is that the way it's been in the past? Is that, you're not, is that your history too, Kate, or is that a different --
No, athletics was told you won't move forward with increases, so, and it's been, they've been pretty much flat-funded, and I'm just saying, let's take a look at what truly are needs. Maybe there was a reason it needed to be flat-funded. I mean, we had to cut a million dollars out, and we've been able to restore some things to music and art, and I'm all for that. I'm just saying that I think we need to take a look at athletics. It services three times the amount of students, and I think there needs to be equity. We need to be able to assure that to taxpayers. It won't hold up this gift, and I just think that it behooves us to know what the needs are. And there are needs there.
Actually, there is the question that we do have some money in the building revolving fund, that we could --
What's the figure in the building rental?
Building rental.
The projected number as of July 1, 2008, without taking the $22,000, is $199,000.
And that's minus what we voted the last two meetings ago on the removal of the trees and the other additional work on the pavement?
I believe so, yes.
What about the athletic revolving account? Because that's, if there's a concern about --
Athletic revolving's projected balance would be $26,000 as of July 1.
Now, does the money from the receipts from the Thanksgiving game go into that?
Into the athletic revolving, yes.
Okay. So wouldn't that boost it?
That's estimating that the total deposit take for the athletic revolving for FY08 would be $47,850.
Okay.
So that's built into that number.
Built into.
Okay. All right. So that little bubble's already been --
It's that $26,800 figure that I'm projecting as of July 1 takes into account not only the athletic --
The Thanksgiving.
The Thanksgiving receipts, but also any future receipts, as well as expenses that we've hit the account for, plus the offset of $40,000 that we take out as a budget offset during the FY08 year.
Well --
You can do, the way I'm listening to it now, you can do, you can take these separately. You have a motion on the table that needs to be voted on one way or the other.
Well, we voted on both the motions. The third would be for the additional --
That's what I mean. That's what, there's a motion, there's a motion.
Well, we voted the --
No, when do you say that motion? The third motion was me.
We have the vote on the table to accept the $40,000. Kate, you made the motion in the second.
Right, and we voted. So is there a motion on the table, or if not, would somebody like to make a motion on the table?
I don't have a vote.
We didn't take a vote on the second. We need to take a vote on the second.
Kate, did take a vote.
I thought, yes, we did take a vote on the second.
To accept the --
No, I'm sorry, you did.
We did.
I don't have a motion for the second part.
Which is to --
Which is to --
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we use $24,000 to supplement this so that we can go ahead and order these uniforms.
Right. Is it $22,000, I think?
$22,000.
$22,000.
$22,000.
Do I have a second on that? Yes. All right, all those in favor?
Shouldn't it be discussion?
We just had a discussion. All those opposed? Okay, the vote is three to one. Three ones, zero.
Okay, the second part of this, which I think is equally exciting, but may --
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Shouldn't Mr. Harrington be back before this?
No.
Not yet?
You'll hear this. Some school districts have established nonprofit educational foundations to raise tax-deductible funds for the district to assess, to assist funding capital needs like those described and funded tonight. Actually, I've had a number of examples of working with educational foundations. There's a long-established one in Newton, in Brookline, in Medfield. I've had an opportunity to serve on the Eastern School Foundation where I live for four years. So these are nonprofit organizations established to, as I just mentioned, to help to assist school districts with funding needs, and so I've seen them and work really well. Martha, Larry, and I have spent considerable time over the last few weeks evaluating how we would establish such a foundation in Foxborough, and how we could design a fundraising effort with a bold goal to raise $250,000 to assist programs in every grade within our district. To get our fundraising efforts off to a fast start and to demonstrate to potential partners that the school committee is serious about fundraising efforts, the Harringtons have also donated a number of significant gifts, which we plan over a period of time to raffle off. Let me give you four examples of what Judy and Larry Harrington have already put on the table as ideas for additional fundraising. The first one is a brand-new 2008 Lexus RX350 with a prepaid 36-month lease. The winner would be responsible for insurance, maintenance, excise tax, and mileage charges in excess of 30,000 miles, or the winner may elect $15,000 in cash. The second one, a two-week vacation in Hawaii for four people, staying in oceanfront suites at world-class Marriott Resorts in Oahu and Maui. Airfare, car rental, sightseeing, meals, and more. This vacation is valued at about $15,000. The third one, a one-week vacation at Marriott's lush Imperial Palms Resort in Orlando for six people, airfare, car rental, day tickets for both Disney and Universal Studios, and cash for meals and souvenirs. Again, this vacation is also estimated to be valued at about $15,000. And finally, a one-week vacation at Marriott Surf Club in Aruba for six people in an oceanfront suite at the Marriott Surf Club, including airfare, car rental, and cash for meals. airfare, car rental and cash for meals, the casino and more. The casino, we might want to think a little bit more about. This vacation is valued at fifteen thousand dollars as well. Last Friday, Martha and I had an opportunity to meet with Dan Murphy at the New England Patriots to discuss this vision for this project. And Dan quickly offered to partner with us and support us. And we have a lot of details to work out, but we're thinking of an activity to kick off the foundation that would be hosted at Gillette Stadium and that, and we're looking at some dates for the spring. And we may include a number of other opportunities. Many of you were part of the bid auction and we certainly are not going to conflict with that, but there may be some opportunities to look at some of the successes that they've had and to look at silent auctions, live auctions, those kinds of things. Martha suggested, and I agree with this, that this could be a community event. So this would really be on, be beyond what the bid auction has been, which has been, from what I understand after just attending one, is much more of an elementary-based, elementary level. And so not only would the foundation help the elementary schools, but it could also significantly help the middle school and the high school. So I think there are some opportunities. And to make this even more of a community event, we could even do something like having people bring non-perishable food to supplement the Foxborough food pantry. We had a meeting, the principals and the guidance counselors, and I had a meeting with Lisa Downs and others about the needs in this community. And they're certainly, they're certainly there. So we have some opportunities there. And let me close by saying this. As all of you know, and I've come to know more again and it's really reinforced what a unique community Foxborough is. Seen it from my days growing up here to my early teaching days and now as the superintendent of schools. I know many within the community will join the school committee in this ambitious fundraising effort. We have a lot to do to set up the foundation. We're learning more about setting up a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I've actually had a couple of school districts that have sent me information already and will be gathering more information from some of the places that I, some of the districts where I've worked and I've mentioned. We need to solicit more assistance from other businesses and citizens, get this raffle idea off the ground, get people selling tickets and then planning for this event at Gillette Stadium. In closing, I want to thank the school committee because I know many of you have been talking about these kinds of things for a while. For their leadership, energy and the focus on the critical things that will improve the success for all of our students. This fundraising effort will take a lot of energy and the community should be proud of the school committee and all they are tempted to accomplish. So I think, I think this is a significant opportunity that, and I want, again, I want to thank Judy and Larry for seeding this with significant prizes that people, I think, will be very interested in. So that's the idea. I'd certainly open it up for discussion.
I just think it's going to be a very exciting time for us to bring in a lot of people, to support the system, to work together and to work in the best interest of the whole town. And I think it's going to be quite a cross-section of people that we can attract and make it an annual event. I mean, the firemen used to have their fireman ball and if, you know, that's kind of gone by the wayside. So if we can bring in as many people as we possibly can to join our committee, to join our group and to make this grow, because we're not going to be here forever. There's going to be another committee, there's going to be another group of people. They might have their own ideas, but I think the energy and the excitement that we have for this right now is, it can only grow. And I, anybody who's interested, certainly give us a call. But I've, this is right down my alley. This is my type of fundraiser and I think that we can do a tremendous job and really make an impact on this educational fund and give us some reserves and some money that we don't have right at the moment, that people can come to us for and we can, you know, offer a little bit more. So I'm very excited about this opportunity. Again, Judy and Larry, I can't thank you enough for helping us to get off the ground with this. And your efforts will not go by the wayside. We will do you proud.
I think it's a wonderful idea, the idea of a foundation to start that and to make that money grow. Thank you for your generosity and your leadership. That will help to get it off the ground. Do you, do we need, you're still looking into the foundation. We would need some kind of motion so that that could be collected or I'm sure for tax purposes you need to have it before the end of the year or?
The foundation, no. That's just something we just need. We've accepted the gifts. The, we don't have to accept the others as yet.
That's correct.
Until we decide how this is all going to take shape. As I said, setting up, there's obviously some legal issues around setting up a 501(c)(3). And then, so I'll be, I'll be speaking to our attorney and as I said, I'll be gathering information from other school districts and other communities that have set them up. So, and then we'll have it as a regular part of our next few agendas. So people can start to see what, how all that takes shape.
I think it's a very innovative idea. I think it's wonderful. Other communities are doing it and we're looking outside of what we're doing to try to find more funding for all, like, you know, these wonderful things that we need to do for the district. And just want to publicly thank Judy and Larry as well for your generosity.
I think what's nice about it too is, you know, we always kind of have our hand out and we hope that people be generous and jump on board and, you know, you wait and see what you're going to get. This is an opportunity for people to actually get something for giving. And I think, you know, when you show around what we're offering, it's a tremendous raffle that's being put together. And there'll be four different exciting opportunities for people to actually get some return on what they're giving to the system. So I'm really looking forward to this.
Pembroke is a.
Pembroke's another good example.
Very successful education foundation, I know. So I would suggest we contact them for their ideas too. And again.
Yeah, no.
Merci beaucoup.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Now, can we invite Mr. Harrington back?
I think we can.
And I do have a suggestion. In the excitement about all these, the excitement of all of these gifts, I would like to backtrack for a moment. I think we skipped right over approving.
I was going to do the minutes at the end because I know Steve was here and I wanted to do that. And we have the folks from Foxborough Cable Access, so I'd like to be able to accommodate them as well and we'll come back in a minute.
Okay. I just wanted to, you noticed that I.
No, I.
Good job there. Had you noticed, yes.
I forgot to take votes, but I noticed we.
Mike, do you and Diane want to come forward?
While Mike and Diane are coming forward, as we said last week, Diane had placed a call to my home, left me a message that her and I had touched base on the telephone, where she shared with me that they have some thoughts and some ideas about their future. And I invited her to come to the school committee and to talk to the school committee about the three ideas they have and to get some interaction going with the school committee because one of those ideas kind of involved us. So folks, it's all yours.
Thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. If it's all right with you, I'm sure you know, I'm Diane Monahan and this is Mike Webb. I'm sure he's very familiar to you all.
He does a great job. Him and his entire, all the volunteers he has working, he's doing a phenomenal job.
He's wonderful. So, but if it's okay with all of you, I thought we could spend a few minutes explaining why we're here and how we got to this point in our process. But first of all, FCA is a nonprofit organization that facilitates the use of three community access channels. And we provide the equipment, the resources and the training for the residents and the community to produce these. And our funding, I hope you all know, comes from Comcast, a contract that we have with Comcast, the Town of Foxborough has with Comcast, which is due to expire next November. So without anything further, we'll let Mike give you the details.
I just wanted to give you sort of the backstory as to how we got to this point in terms of coming to you tonight, looking for some support. Because we're going through this renewal process, which the, there's some confusion. Anytime you deal with cable licenses, there tends to be some confusion. Foxborough Cable Access does not directly negotiate that contract, the cable license contract. It's between the Town of Foxborough and the cable operator, which in this instance is Comcast. And in April of this year Comcast sent us a letter notifying us, quote, "The space used by your organization in our Foxborough facility will no longer be available to FCA." And so it wasn't necessarily a shock to us. There was a trend in the Comcast organization to be going away from housing public access centers inside their operations. And we do appreciate Comcast giving us a heads up before we get to the negotiation process, allowing us to search our options and begin the process. So for the past seven months, FCA has been aggressively seeking out and evaluating potential new locations, along with rent, lease or own options. Without getting into details, there's a lot of restrictions that we have in terms of the location that we need to be for technical purposes, hooking up to the institutional network and such. So part of the process included meeting the town officials to discuss town-owned property as a possible relocation opportunity. We've had conversations with anybody and everybody who has a for rent, for lease sign out in the front of their property. I think we've exhausted all those possibilities. The most notable one, and the one that has been in the newspapers, has been the Chestnut Green situation. Chestnut Green are the developers of the state hospital lands. And we do continue to have conversations with Chestnut Green. And we expect that they will be helping us regardless of the location that we end up in, in some fashion. Without getting into, again, a lot of details, Chestnut Green simply does not have the ability to charge rent at the rates that we need them at and still make the banks happy with the loans, the funding that they need to go on with their projects. They could probably explain it better than I. But, you know, they're seeking grant monies and different things with those buildings. And at this point, we don't see an opportunity there, but that doesn't mean that something won't happen in the future. And if there are other locations in mind, they may be willing to help us with architectural services and things like that. Last month, the FCA Board of Directors reviewed all the locations that we had identified and voted to explore a possible collaboration with the Foxborough Public Schools as their top priority. They came up with three different locations. The Foxborough High School potential situation is our top priority. And the reason for that, I think, one of the first reasons is location, location, location. As most of you know who watch the public access channels, majority of the programming is school-related. It's school sports, it's school committee meetings, it's music concerts. And it makes sense that if there could be a relationship there, a stronger relationship location-wise between the school department and FCA, that would be a mutually beneficial situation. So we would essentially be closer to the action when it comes to the student population. One of the initial thoughts that we had is that it would open up opportunities to further collaborate with, for example, the English Department's Communications Arts class. Foxborough Cable Access, I would say fifteen-plus years ago, funded, built and still maintains a television studio on the second floor of this media center, which a English class called Communication Arts utilizes and has been for the last, don't quote me, but I believe it's been about fifteen years. And sometimes it can be a struggle, technically speaking, with the limited staff that we have, to respond to situations and just work with a class one-on-one. The close proximity, if FCA were located on school grounds, I think would open up more opportunities to work with a class like that. I also realize that the art department is now utilizing video and there may be some opportunities there. And those are probably just two examples of situations where there could be some collaboration. I think that if there was some support from this committee to move forward with a feasibility study, to see what possibilities are out there, that might be part of the discussion, is how the two organizations could work together on some issues. So tonight, we're seeking support to move forward with a feasibility study to see if there is an opportunity to relocate our studios and facilities onto school grounds. We did, once the board made this vote and Diane had a phone conversation with Larry, I also had a meeting with Superintendent Martin to just have some initial discussions about, is this remotely possible? And that's why we're here tonight. It seemed that this was the appropriate next step to take. I've also had conversations with Mike O'Leary to discuss the matter. And we appreciate all the support that everybody's given us so forth, not only in this project, but everything that we do together. So I think that concludes my.
I guess one question, Chris, maybe to you. There are, in my mind, there are lots of wonderful merits for this, but there may be some legal issues that we need to work through from the town. And so I would hope that the board would give an expression of interest, either for or against, and then that we could enter in some dialogue whereby the town, the schools, our attorneys can make sure that legally we're able to, because you know, you're not a town department, so you're a nonprofit. So we'd have to work through those details. But from my viewpoint, I think this is a great natural fit. You have the budget to build the building. You're not asking the schools to pay for the building or anything. So to me, when you look at the amount of coverage you provide for our school system and the connection with the program that's upstairs, it seems to be a natural fit. But I'd like to open it up for dialogue from the committee. Martha?
I could be mistaken, but I know in going to some schools, maybe not in the area, but I think there is a cable that is associated with one of the school systems within the area, isn't?
I'm in the process of compiling a list. Right now, I have about fifteen Massachusetts public access centers that are either inside a school. There are actually situations where they're literally inside the school. Most of them are utilizing old shop areas. They've converted shops into public access facilities. I think what we're proposing is somewhat out of the norm in that physical addition is a very expensive proposition, but realizing there's not an old shop area to utilize, that's really a wrong option. But at the moment, there's probably double the number that I've come up with, but I know of at least fifteen as close as Norton that are in that situation.
Is it Norton that had, I know I went someplace for a meeting and there it was, attached to the school.
Yeah, Norton, Wakefield, they're all over the place. East Bridgewater, that are all in public schools. Some are in middle schools, some are in high schools.
Chris, ready?
Yeah, we worked through this issue last year in Framingham, actually. In the leasing space at one of the middle schools, a former Framingham South High School. So same kind of situation. Comcast gave them a notice last year. They had to be out by, it was a year ago, they had to be out by December 31st of last year. So there is precedent for this, but there's also legal issues.
Right.
That go back and forth. And so we had our school attorney and going back and forth with your board, actually. That's how we did it. So I think that could, we could do that.
I would favor a feasibility study.
Oh, I would support a feasibility study, absolutely.
Would that be premature based on your back and forth of the legal issues? I mean, I would feel that we would be confident to work those out to everyone's satisfaction because I think this is important.
I think we'd need the feasibility study in order to see what that would look like legally. Because you're right, a separate building is different than leasing space in a school. That's a little more the norm. That's a little more than norm, what we're used to, but putting a building on school property is different.
What I did want to do is have them incur cost if the committee wasn't willing to entertain the idea. So what I'd like is for the committee to, to move, to express an interest, and then to allow the superintendent, the town manager, and the Cable Access Board to work through the details and come back and update us before any formal votes would be taken. But that would allow you and the town to start working through what the issues would be, how you might address those, and work on your feasibility at the same time.
I am also with that, I think this is another wonderful idea.
Okay, Martha, you've made that motion to support it. Second by Katie.
I thought we would wait on the vote. Are you looking for confirmation?
Just to support the vote.
We should move forward without that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor opposed, motion carries five zero. So Mike, we'll ask you and Diane to work with the superintendent and the town manager, and we'll kind of keep moving it forward and see if we can't make this a reality.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, since we have two of our principals here, and we're a little bit ahead of schedule, I'd like to keep moving forward so that they might be able to get out a little bit earlier. So I'll keep the minutes again to the end of the night. And the next item on the agenda is district-wide class sizes at the middle school and the high school. So I'll ask Sue and Jeff if they'll come forward, please.
Can I go on more?
We're gonna do class sizes, yeah.
Oh, all right.
And then we'll do budget.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson is handing you his new and improved class size handout that has a little more information. The numbers are the same in the sections at each grade level, but there are little asterisks and little Xs, which have some meaning. In grade five and six, so those classes are similar to elementary school classrooms and are a little easier to understand because the students are in a classroom. And in fifth and sixth grade, they were two-person teams, and they, they move as a group. So that if you look at grade five, section one and two, for example, would be the two classrooms of House A. There are twenty-three students in each classroom, and they would just shift between the two teachers. That six X and twelve X are the number of periods in a six-day cycle, forty-two, where there's an additional paraprofessional or support staff in that classroom. And you can see right now, grade five has some sections of twenty-four, sections of twenty-three, and some of twenty-two. This doesn't take into account enrollment projections for next year, but we're talking about this year, and I'll talk about projections for next year when we get to the budget. Grade seven and grade eight class sizes are different and are affected, like the high school is, by differences in terms of what students are taking. In grade seven, there are two possible math programs a student can enter, the pre-algebra two-year program or the pre-algebra one-year program. The, that's the only more homogeneously grouped classes, otherwise the classes are heterogeneously grouped. The class size would range here from sixteen up to, five classes are twenty-five. In grades seven, the breakdown is there, the little asterisk indicates where there are paraprofessionals and additional staff in that classroom, that particular section, and that would be six.
So just, just for clarity, the difference with grade five and six, where you put in the number of times that a, probably a paraprofessional, or with, some of these would, like the inclusion classrooms, where a specialized teacher would be in.
Right, the teacher.
Working with a group of students. And so is, just, again, just so that we're clear, because the second page is a, is a, so for instance, in section one in pre-algebra two, there is a person there, every time that class is.
Correct.
Is in session, there's another person in there, paraprofessional or teacher.
Correct.
Well, it's a little bit difficult in some ways to look at all those, the ten sections and find, I mean, the question might be, why in section one and two is it only six times a cycle, whereas three, four, and five is twelve times a cycle? And my, my guess is that that has to do with educational plans and other things that would make sure that, I just, just so that the public is more aware of, because I think sometimes we get into discussions about class size and we don't count the number of adults.
Right. I guess what's a little confusing, just clarifying for me, if you look at section one, pre-algebra two, it has the asterisk, is the sixteen taking into consideration the additional paraprofessional or without that?
That's the total number of students enrolled in that particular section of pre-algebra one. And because of the educational plans, the students, some of the students in that class, it's, there's a requirement that there is an additional support staff person, a special educator or assistant in that section, every day it meets.
So when you look at a twenty-six, and there's an asterisk next to it, it's, that teacher does have some assistance in helping them deal with the twenty-six students.
But is that for all sixteen, or just for the student that it may require on the IEP? I guess that's what I'm confused about.
The, the adult in there is specifically assigned to look out for that student and meet the, with the teacher, to meet the goals and objectives and the modifications and accommodations on the educational plan. That's the primary role of that person. However, it does extend to other students in the classroom as well, making sure that, you know, students have their homework written down, et cetera. So that there's just another, there's a person in there for some of those kids. So it's just an additional piece of information to the number of students in that particular section of that classroom. Grade eight, where the enrollment is larger, there are fourteen sections that are twenty-five and twenty-six. So seventh grade is nine percent of the sections over twenty-four, and grade eight has twenty-five percent. But when you're talking about the class size, class size is something that doesn't necessarily define the success in, of that classroom environment. So it is, these are the facts that are there. Yet I think that the teachers would say, these are classes larger than last year's classes, because in grade seven and eight, there was sixteen to twenty-two per section, so it's significantly larger. Yet because of the nature of the instructional changes that we have implemented over last year and this year, it is not a burden at this time, although there are more students, there are more papers to correct. So it, it isn't necessarily optimal.
Questions for Sue? Kate, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I'm really shocked that our class sizes are what they are. And last year was the first time we eliminated two teachers, and I guess, I think when you get over twenty-five, it's, it's a flag to me. We have some wonderful teachers, but we see it again in the high school. And although the number may be more acceptable at the high school, I think it's something for budgeted purposes this year we need to take very seriously. I haven't studied all the new sheets, but from what I, under the old sheet, I was not happy to see both the seventh, eighth grade. We made a budget decision last year to eliminate those two teachers, and we need to say, this is our feedback, that's now coming in December. It is, it has impacted the class size, and I'm not proud that we've done that. So I think there's a flag, I think we need to watch it very carefully. I won't put you on the spot further, but you've already alluded that it's not optimal. In years past, we've asked, what is the number at the middle school and the high school? And if you would care to comment, I'd love to hear it again, but I'm very concerned.
Well, I'd be very happy to comment, actually. I think that as you travel through an educational career from K through college, there are different, there are different things that occur at different grade levels that require different adjustments. Grade seven has fewer students, so the class size is smaller. Grade eight is larger. We actually did not anticipate the eighteen eighth graders that were, that enrolled over the summer, which skewed us over in those sections, otherwise we would have been at twenty-four. So that, and that is about one teacher's worth. However, the addition of the, with the work that the staff did in terms of meeting student needs to promote high achievement, and working in concert on our school improvement plan, in addition to putting the connections unit in grade seven, I think we have worked to create better students who are focused on academic achievement. I think the parents have worked very well with the teachers, and the class size is not the definitive measure of our success. But you can always say, it is not optimum the way it would be, and it wasn't the way that one would plan or what one budgeted for before the seventeen fifth graders and the eighteen eighth graders entered in August. So that as things are, it's a great group of kids who are having their needs met. It is more work for the teachers to correct all their papers.
And Sue, I thank you for that input. I do not in any way fault you or Mr. Theodos. This is why our class size has to be discussed every year by the school committee, because it is a budgetary matter. I'm disappointed in the school committee, I'm not at all disappointed in you or Mr. Theodos. I know the machinations you go through to get the schedules, and you've done a great job making sure that all of the sections are fair. I'm just, you know, when I look at science, there are four sections that, and, and one of those, they've got twenty-six students. I'm sorry, I only got your, your other sheet moments ago, so I'm gonna go with the sheet that I studied. English, there are four sections, one with twenty-six. Social studies, four, four sections. Even art has twenty-seven. I, I guess that's a concern for me, and that's for eighth grade, and some of the seventh are equal flags. We're at the, we're at the maximum limit. So that does concern me, because the budgetary decisions we made did impact class size at the Aurnum.
Another thing that impacts class size is the, is the ability to schedule where you're working on a team. And without having the information that are the facts that you have for the school year until about August twentieth, everything was very much in sync as we were working on the schedule in, you know, May, June, and July. However, through looking at the, the organization of the teaming of the students, it was more important for students at this developmental level to have the kids on a team talked about consistently by the team of teachers. And it is, it's more papers, that they are well-behaved students, our discipline referrals have substantially reduced over the last two years. It was thirty percent down last year for the year, and this year, we're an additional year-to-date thirty more percent down. So that there isn't disruption within the classroom, and students are able to learn, and they're respectful of each other's, and so the environment with the additional two students is a very good environment. It may not have been good, yet in planning for the larger class size of the two teachers that we were reducing, we put things in place to prepare for it that actually bore fruit. And the teachers would say, there were a lot of kids, like they're focused on their learning, they have support at school, support at home, we have advisory programs. So it isn't twenty-six disruptive students. There are twenty-six students who understand that they need to focus on their education to be a twenty-first century student.
Eighteen of which moved in, in the summertime, you said?
We had forty-eight enrollees over the summer, which really skewed.
Forty-eight across?
Forty-eight.
Five to eight?
Mostly five and eight, about nine, six.
That's a lot, isn't it?
That's a lot that we weren't planning for. We had some leave and some interim.
But I mean, isn't that a lot, you don't usually get forty-eight a year. I mean, that's certainly not an average.
And we can't believe in our projections.
Well.
How are you gonna predict this?
The projections overall, let's be fair, the projections overall are pretty close. What changes is in between. And what's difficult, just so that, what I thought I heard you say was that when you and the former acting superintendent came to the school committee last year, and we collectively decided on a budget, we based it on the facts that we had at the time. What I thought I heard you say is, had we not had the big enrollment over the summer, we would have been okay. But even, so that, so I don't feel upset that the school committee didn't do what they should have done. In addition to that, I feel particularly proud that what you said was that, in the event, you do contingency planning, and in the event people were to move in, you had some contingency plans in place, which you said worked out very well. And we are fortunate that they're great students, because they could have been not-so-great students. But the point was, you indicated that you had contingency plans, you developed them, you implemented them, and that they've worked, and I think your word was they borne fruit. So I think that is a real tribute to the system, that in advance of things changing, we're anticipating them and building in contingency plans, and then when they change, we're working through that. The only criticism, I think, that's fair, is that we should be seeing these numbers sooner, rather than in December, we should be seeing them in the September, October timeframe. And I know September's difficult, because you're just getting back to school and there's so many things going on. But I think what we should do for, for future years is, and I know Kate has brought it up, so I give her credit for that, that we should have tried to get it sooner. Now even getting it to a sooner, it's difficult, even in October, to change something that the budget was approved back in January, February, March, April, even town meeting in May, when the facts didn't change until July or August. So it sounds, though, at least if I'm hearing you, that you and the teachers are feeling as though that the students, even though there may be a class or two of twenty-six, or there's a number of twenty-five, are still getting a quality education. And the way that we'll find out that to be true is when we see the next MCAS scores or the next scores, and be able to see how well they're doing from that standpoint. Is that correct, or?
In general, yes, but I'm not sure that MCAS would be the measure of their success.
What would you think the measure would be, then?
That would be one piece, one piece of it. I would look at this term as we work our way through understanding the power school, how it's different from the previous program, and we look at the students and the student grades. There were only thirty-three students in nine hundred and ten who had a D or an F, Term One. So that that is a significant improvement over the previous year's Term One report, where there were more students and who entered into remediation. We had a great deal of remediation in place last year, we had the additional teachers, we had a few more resources, but I believe with the work with the parents, the students and the teachers, we've bumped up a notch. So that, are you going to see the same improvement? I can't say that you're gonna see that same improvement on the MCAS, but I think you'll see successful students and their, their successful Term One. And the eighth grade is a change from grade seven in terms of beginning to master independence. So that I think we would all prefer to see little Socratic groups, but that's not within our financial feasibility.
But would you be, would you be comfortable, then, in coming back to us after second term, a third term, and giving us an update again on how the students are progressing under the circumstances?
Sure.
Wendy, can we just make a note in the pending file to invite Sue back? At least once, if not twice, to give us an update as to how these students are doing?
Sure. Probably have to reach the master.
Right.
One thing that I'd just like to ask, and I know you're gonna probably be talking about this in your budget, but again, looking to next year, and whether these numbers are... about this in your budget, but again, looking to next year, and whether these numbers are the same for enrollment for the seventh grade moving to eighth, sixth grade, whether we have a discussion about keeping these class sizes the size that they are, if we know ahead of time that this is the way it's going to be, or whether there will be a change in terms of the enrollment.
I'd like to discuss that when we get to the budget, just a few minutes, if we could.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's where it's most relevant.
Right.
And we will obviously see what she's projecting, the number of teachers and the number of students, et cetera.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sue on, on enrollment for the current year? Then we'll ask Jeff to give us his update on enrollment at the high school, the class size at the high school in the current year. Jeff, do you have a new sheet for us, or do we have the same one?
Same one, yeah.
All right.
If you recall, last year, when I presented the class size, and I said the important piece we needed to look at was the bubble we found in our tenth and eleventh grade English and Social Studies classes. And what we were going to look to do is priority schedule and move some personnel around to try to minimize those numbers, because they were pretty high in the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight category. If you look at those numbers, I'm very pleased to announce that we did a real good job minimizing those numbers. And, you know, I, I think that the purpose was, again, to make the class sizes as manageable as possible, to give them the best instruction as possible. Our numbers are always on the low side when you're talking about any kind of remediation class, or sometimes with our AP classes. I would like to try to find, and I have a couple of ideas in the budget presentation, ways to minimize the numbers of smaller classes we have, which are remediation classes. It pays dividends in the long run, because this past MCAS administration, we only had four students that failed the MCAS test, one in English and three in math. So the work pays off, even though, you know, you sacrifice some sections of smaller numbers to be able to accomplish that. But I think as you add science to the mix, and then ultimately add social studies to the mix, the faster we can remediate our students and move them on, the happier they are, the less stress they're involved with, and obviously, the better a feather it is for the district when all is said and done. So that being said with our numbers, that we do have a concern in the area of foreign language. If you, if you look at that sheet, if I might notes you, if you include American Sign Language, we have thirty-four sections, and nine of those sections have twenty-five or more students. If you're looking at just Spanish and French, seven of the twenty-nine sections have twenty-five or over. And the real contention is, if you narrow it down and look just at the Spanish classes, we have some large numbers there. We do have it as a, on our wish list. We've monitored it last year, we're also looking at it this year, and it's not something that I, I think will ultimately go away. And there's a couple of issues that will, I think, inflate those numbers. The first piece is that our American Sign, well, students who have to take either enrichment or remedial courses at the middle school may not come to the high school with a year of foreign language under their belt. So what happens is, some will take American Sign, some will take Spanish. The problem is, if you look at our American Sign, we have twenty-nine and thirty this year in our American Sign honors in college prep course. So where we, if that happens again next year, we're really going to have to minimize and move them into the area of Spanish, where we have more personnel to support that need. But the bubble will continue to grow. So we don't have a, an educational assistant that can support our students in foreign language, which is a concern, because you're talking about struggling learners in English, never mind struggling learners in a foreign language as well. So we would probably look maybe to co-teach a class, so they would have two of our teachers, you know, down the road to support those classes, unless we found an ed assistant that could fit in that role. So our concern, again, and I guess that's on our vision, is our, is our foreign language piece, where our enrollments are a little bit larger than we would like. They're still manageable, but, but I think it's a concern for, for, for future budgets.
Questions for Jeff?
I have a question, because I've noticed that, I'm going to call them electives, but I don't know, the civil liberties, the sociology, America at War, contemporary issue psychology. From my understanding, these are very popular classes, and I'm looking at the class sizes. And my understanding, too, is that a lot of times, some of the kids aren't able to get into these classes. So is there anything that can be done in terms of adding more sections? I mean, the numbers are getting high. I'm assuming these are electives that most eleventh and twelfth graders take, because at that time-
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much twelfth graders at that point, yeah.
Right. And I'm just wondering, that's the time when students who may not be following the traditional English or science path in college, they want to have an opportunity to take some of these classes, to see if it's of interest to them. And if they're, if it's based on seniority, and most seniors can take that, then what happens to the juniors who maybe have electives and can take it? I mean, it, it seems like they're very popular, obviously by the numbers. Is there anything that can be done to?
No, in fact, that's a good point that I forgot to mention, is I think our electives are a concern for us across the board. I think what we will do is try to look at more potential elective classes to support just what you said. We've managed to put our students, the other piece is our students have to take six-point-five credits. So finding sometimes that half a credit is problematic for, for us, and that's the reason you see some uneven distributions in the class size. Certainly, the social studies is the most important. We're probably going to look to create more elective areas. And I may come back to you and say, how strongly do you feel about the SAT piece? Because that's, that's a hit or miss proposition for us, where students, you know, sometimes go kicking and screaming to take the course, they don't necessarily want to take it, and we try to impress the importance of the SAT exam. But if you look at the numbers, we might be able to do better filling those areas with other electives. So I'll report to you on the budget later on about the virtual high school is another way we would look at, to add maybe fifty slots for our students to potentially take electives as well. So I think that's the next piece of the puzzle, I guess, that we need to pay attention to is the electives.
The SAT, though, those classes look like they're pretty full. Well, there's two that have fifteen, but-
The math, the math is-
The math, I mean, you wouldn't want to take away those classes with twenty-four, eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, and then two smaller classes of fifteen.
We may have to construct them differently, because they need every other day, so they create problems trying to schedule. So that's part of the conversation of how to, how to, it's really how to maximize periods to use, utilize staff and electives.
And as well as the business law, the accounting-
Absolutely.
The marketing, all of those, again, are, a lot of, a lot of students are going to be majoring that in.
Correct.
So.
Correct. And that's problematic, because it's a one-person department at this point.
I guess a concern I have is, a schedule certainly is always student-driven, depends on what the students want. And I guess one of my concerns would be, even if you've tried to divide these classes, do we have the room to have two classes? And what does it do to the schedule? You know, you have so many kids that want to take it, and granted, you've got thirty kids in a class, you want to divide it in two. Where do you fit it in the schedule, and how do you house another classroom? I, I just don't, I don't think there's any easy solution to this. And certainly, I'll say it, I'll, I'll stand up and say it, you know, if kids come prepared to learn, and if they come into a classroom, they sit down, pay attention, you could have three hundred kids in a classroom, as long as everybody came in and did what they were supposed to do. But certainly, if you have classes, kids where they're going to take away from the classroom environment and create problems, and it doesn't matter whether we have five kids in them or thirty in them, we're going to have that problem. But my concern is, if you start dividing up these classes and hiring more teachers, where are we going to put them? And how do you fit it into the schedule?
I think we can fit them, I think that's the issue, the hiring of, it becomes the hiring of more personnel. And I think the importance of a teacher having a whole room to work out of when they're not having a class is, is an important component. But what we would really do is displace teachers, and, which is fine, but we would displace them, but we do have the classroom space in order to add personnel. It's just the idea of that teacher room, personal room, might, might change. But again, I think we'll continue to refine. I think when I present the budget, I have some other thoughts anyways to present to the school committee, but I think the things that you presented are the things we're looking at, we'll continue to look at.
How would virtual classes be monitored? Would there be one teacher assigned to have-
Yeah, the site coordinator would be responsible-
Coordinator, right.
To make sure that the students are doing the work, either at home, or in school, whatever they chose to do the work, yes.
Ma, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just want, what's the minimum number of students in a classroom that, like, tenth grade world geography? In one section, there's thirteen. And I'm just wondering what? How does that happen? Why aren't those students dispersed between the other four classes?
Just the schedule doesn't let them move anywhere else. They've chosen, let's say, math and English. In order to move that, they have to change their math and English, or sometimes it's a matter of changing three classes in the process. The other thing that hurts, as I have to tell you, is I can't tell you the time we spent to organize this program, and to get it all set and mail the schedules home, and everyone's all set till they walk through the door. And then it's like chaos for five days to make the changes we have to make. Now, you can make the argument, do I make those changes, and, or do I not, and hold firm and battle the students who say, geez, I don't want to be there, I changed my mind. And so it's kind of, you know, a catch-22. So that creates a lot of, of the problems we have, too.
Do you have any questions? Kate?
And Jeff, I would say the same. Another great job in your scheduling, and when you put together a master schedule, we're landlocked, not seven periods, but because of ban for that first hour, it's always a challenge. And you did, I think, a beautiful job. My disappointment is not at all with you or the administrative team. I am a little leery, again, of the class sizes. And I understand language, and there's a part that we may add a point, you know, foreign language teacher, but I am very concerned over the social studies electives. And I know that you've, you've done the most that you can, but just as this committee would say, thirty or thirty-one, and thirty-three in math was too much, I think we need to make a stand that that's too much in, in these social studies. I think those electives are important. I think, you know, the business electives are important, and I know that it's not just juniors and seniors that take them, because I'm aware that there are some underclassmen that try to get into a marketing course, or into, you can't get into America at war. So if you're a sophomore, and you know that that's always filled up, you may want to grab it if the schedule allows, and the pressure will, will grow. I'm also concerned about environmental science. We only have labs set up for twenty-five, and because of the state of our science labs, we don't necessarily have twenty-five working stations in every science lab. So to get twenty-eight, to me, that's a, that's a, that's a flag. And I think, again, I, I think you and your team have done a wonderful job with scheduling. I would like, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the fact that many of the courses that sometimes fell well below fifteen. I think you've done a marvelous job to bring up those numbers. I agree with Katie that the few that, I mean, I wouldn't want to see AP statistics not made available to those nine students. I would fully support that, just as I would fully support the three students that are in MCAS on math review, because I think that student achievement is, is critical. But I, I think from a budget perspective, we have to look very seriously. In years past, we've added a halftime English teacher, or a halftime history teacher. Have you ever found that? To, to reduce those class sizes, and I think that was two, almost three years ago?
It's a combination position.
It was a combination. We, so I think we need to get creative, and there's a mark in the sand here, that for this budget round, we've got to see, is it foreign language? It may or may not be, because maybe there's something creative with that assistant, ed assistant for American Sign Language. It might be that we have to do something to increase a, a, a teacher in the social studies realm or, or science. Our math numbers look good, and our English numbers look good, because we focused it in years past. I think we need to really bite the bullet and make sure we're focused on that.
Jeff? Are you hearing complaints from your social studies teachers that these classes are manageable? Do they have problems with student class?
I haven't, no, I haven't heard complaints. I think the other piece is, when you get into the large numbers, the amount of writing you wanted to do gets affected. And so, you know, we're always pushing writing as much as we can, and so I think it gets affected that way with the larger class size. The management piece, you know, the social studies people are fine with that.
There is one, one other piece, and I think it's educational, and I don't want to overstep my bounds here, but from a budget perspective, I can't wait to see the new model for guidance when that gets rolled out, because I think when we start really delivering academic counseling to students, because that's an area we haven't been able to. We're going to see a better class size, because the only numbers I'd like to see improve, there are more students capable of honors. And not all honor students from the eighth grade were able to be accommodated. Sometimes it's a scheduling issue, sometimes it's, sometimes it's academic, or they may or may not know. And I'd like to see those numbers come up, because that will take some of the pressure off of the college placement level, too. And I think we've got, if we're really about student achievement, then we've got to take a look at that. And I think to have guidance counselors who pay attention and encourage kids, it'll be a lot less of a nightmare those first couple of weeks of school. I'm looking forward to that.
Jeff, we heard from the middle school, a significant decrease two years in a row in disciplinary type issues, and great students, and everybody working together. What are we seeing in trends at the high school in that respect?
I, I would say, you know, if you asked me that question three years ago, I don't have much hair left, anyway, but three years ago, I lost probably what I had to begin with. This past year was better, and this year is, is very, very good, I think, you know, having the extra assistant principal to immediately deal with situations. And the situations have been minimal, they really have. We're off to a real good start, and, you know, we asked our upper class to be role models, and I think they're doing a good job for us in that capacity. So it's been, it's been real, real good.
Excellent. So the trend is, we're starting to see it through?
I think so. I really do.
Excellent. All right, any other questions on class size? All right, why don't we move on to the budget, Chris?
Okay, we, we have five areas tonight that we are going to discuss, and we've had some discussion already in, in terms of class size, because it obviously has a direct connection to staffing. And Sue, I'll ask you to come back up and talk about the Ahern Middle School budget for FY09.
Do you want to look at the page four of the budget, or you want me to start with the staffing?
What would you like? It's our opportunity to present to us. Just tell us where you want us to go.
I'll start with the staffing, since we're, we're in that venue right now. Okay, just listen.
That's under the Ahern tab?
Yeah, it's the first.
It's the, I think the third page under the Ahern tab.
It's actually not numbered.
Right. So it's the third page under the Ahern tab. It says staffing requests?
Yes. Third page.
It says staffing requests at the top, Sue, is that where you are?
No, I'm on my own paper.
Okay.
Would you like a copy?
Yes, your first page is equal to our third page, okay? Just so that everybody knows. In the book, page three underneath Ahern is Sue's first page. It's a little different order, but it looks like it has the same information. So, go ahead, Sue.
One of the things that relates directly to the previous class size discussion is a request for one grade five teacher in, for next year, the grade five enrollments are projected to be two-hundred-and-forty students. That would be ten sections of twenty-four students per classroom, which really starts the year off with no margin for error. And my request is for an additional grade five teacher, so there would be eleven grade five sections, and that would bring the class size down to twenty-two. The second teaching position would be for grade six. Currently, the projection for grade six, which is this current grade five class, would be for two-hundred-and-forty-two students, which yields a class size with the current section, number of sections, ten, at twenty-four-point-two students. And so I'm asking for an additional classroom teacher to bring the class size down to about The other teaching position that I am asking for is a shift from a point-five reading teacher, which would be a reduction, to, to add a point-five math teacher for grades seven and eight. Currently, our math specialist has approximately point-five math instructional duties. One grade seven class that she is responsible for, pre-algebra two, and remediation classes during B core for seven and eight, as well as an enrichment class and an elective class. She can be more effective in doing the job of a specialist if she does, is not directly responsible for the instruction for these students. This has enabled our, our math class size to remain down, and her specialist coaching duties can benefit more students if that point-five position was shifted from the reading to the math. Currently, I believe that with the scheduling, based on the current staffing, enrollments, the assignments, we could- the assignments, we could reassign the students that that point-five teacher has, some of which are specialized reading instruction. And there are teachers who are becoming certified in that specialized instruction to be able to assimilate those students to the other reading teachers that we have in the building without any undue effect on the class size. So, that, that would be just a shift. Another position that I'm requesting is to shift the guidance assistant to a guidance secretary. The guidance assistant works from 7:55 a.m. to 2:35 p.m. The secretary works from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. When the school year ends, when the hundred-and-eighty-six days are over, so do the hours of the educational The secretary working through the calendar year could assist administration, guidance counselors, the school psychologist, and the school nurse. Currently, the lack of secretarial help is done by administration, guidance, the school psychologist. And I think we can utilize our time more wisely. It's a significant difference in hours, and I think it is needed. We've had to move scheduling from the guidance department up to the central main office, where administration does it because of the lack of people in the guidance department to do it, and the lack of time during the school year. So, that would be asking for that. Also, I'm asking for an additional point-five assistant principal to bring the total number to two-point-oh assistant principals. And I'd like to read an excerpt from the Stanford Educational Leadership Institute from research commissioned by the Wallace Foundation. "The role of the principal has swelled to include a staggering array of professional tasks and competencies. They are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional and curriculum leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations and communications experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, as well as guardians of various legal contractual and policy mandates and initiatives. In addition, they are expected to serve the conflicting needs, the often conflicting needs and interests of many stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, district office officials, unions, and state and federal agencies." This is my writing. "From the call from the bus office asking for an administrator to board the bus to the teacher requesting administrative assistance academically and in a disciplinary way, standards must be upheld in order for students to achieve. Using round numbers, mandatory special education meetings take approximately six-hundred-and-fifty hours of an administrator's time in a school year. This does not account for administrative participation in additional special required meetings. Staff supervision by contract is approximately a minimum of five-hundred-and-fifty hours per year for a staff the size of the Hearn's. Meetings with teacher teams for the purposes of non-curriculum issues are approximately two-hundred hours per year. These basic tasks require approximately two-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy hours of an administrator's time, exclusive of time spent on curriculum and instructional improvement. Adding curricular meetings by grade level and content area increases the time requirements by five-hundred hours, or three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy hours. This does not take into account the fact that there are no department heads in the middle school as in a high school, and no teacher-team leaders. A one-hundred-and-eighty-day school year contains one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty hours with teachers and students in the building. With three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy hours needed at a bare minimum for direct staff-student contact, additional administrative support is needed during every school day. Add to that the hundreds of hours required to schedule students for an academic year and schedule for mandated state and district testing, building management, fulfilling mandated reporting, parent contact, community, et cetera. I think the school committee can get a better picture of why I believe that increasing the point-five assistant principal position is a necessary step for continued school improvement."
Sue, it would be helpful if, when you read something like that, you provide a copy for us. It's much easier to follow along, a long document like that, especially, I thought it was going to be an MCAS test for a minute there. You kept adding and subtracting and dividing. I thought we got to have an answer for it. So, if you would just make copies tonight before you leave, it would be helpful for us. And certainly, you could make some for the audience as well, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
I figured Paul had the big calculator.
Yeah. The big numbers.
He never believes my numbers.
I just have a question about the grade-six enrollment that's at 208, that will be moving up to the seventh grade.
Two-twelve. Okay.
Well, as of December first, I've got it as 208.
Okay.
All right. If you've got four more kids, then it's not registered here. Are you making adjustments for that, or is there any concern? Can we shuffle things around a little bit?
In terms of?
Or if you're going to, if you're going to add a position for the seventh and eighth grade?
For grades?
Math, right. Well, that class is going to be moving up to the seventh grade next year.
Correct. Moving up to the eighth grade.
No. The sixth is going to be moving to the seventh, that's the 208. This year, you've got 228, so you're talking essentially a twenty-student difference. Now, certainly, kids moving in, moving out, that's going to make, I just wonder if you take that into consideration when you're talking about adding a position at the seventh grade, eighth grade level?
I understand what you're saying. If there are twenty fewer students moving up, you think you might save a teacher, then use that teacher in when you need the extra? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
The point-five math position, although the sixth graders are moving up to the seventh grade, the eighth graders, the seventh graders moving to eighth grade are two-hundred-and-thirty?
Seven, two-twenty-eight, actually.
Oh, it's December first.
Give or take four.
Give or take four. There's always four in the works there. When the students are scheduled with their foreign language and their math levels, it is not necessarily as easy to keep them as even as in grade-five and six. In addition, the point-five position would further assist in the math goals by allowing, right now, we have, the class sizes are smaller in the lower groupings, but the anticipated duties of that teacher would be a grade-eight position, a grade-seven, and the remediation positions, the classroom instruction that's currently provided by the specialist, so that the specialist could assist in more of the data and teacher coaching and working with the younger grades and the kids at, who have been selected for the special programs for the students who are high achievers in math.
On staffing, questions for anyone else?
I'd just like to follow up more. Sue, you've done an excellent job explaining, but I'll confess, I still don't get it. I see part of the need for the point-five math. I get that. But what about science and English and social studies that have equally, based on the class size figures we just looked at, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six? In fact, they appear to have larger numbers in math. So, can you help me understand why that point-five is, should, should be in math and maybe not another subject?
Sure. The larger group of the grade-eight kids are moving on. So, in seven and eight together, there'll be a total, grade-eight will have two-hundred-and-thirty-two, grade-seven, two-twelve, give or take those four kids that move in and out. The difference, the heterogeneously grouped classes such as science and social studies are more impacted by foreign language, whether they have French, Spanish, fundamentals of Spanish for the students who may have finished reading and have that opportunity or reading. Not as much by the math level, that constrains it a little more. So, I believe that we can more evenly group the students in science and social studies to bring the levels, to not have that fluctuation, whereas math is a little more difficult, because it's grouped in grade-eight by three levels, and in grade-seven by two. So, you would get an average of twenty-three in your science class and your social studies class, which I think we can maintain, depending on, looking at it carefully, with the foreign language, French, Spanish fundamentals, or the reading class that they take. Where you don't have that flexibility when they have to take a particular level of math. They could be in any science class.
By adding the math, we'll still, we don't have to worry about science and social studies, because those, instead of being twenty-five like they were this year, they'll be at twenty-three, based on how you do the schedule.
Part of it was the reading foreign language that constrained it in addition to the math, because you want the kids to all be overseen by the same group of teachers.
So, we don't need the reading? We've gone up on our?
We still, we still need reading. We still need reading. It's just in creating a master schedule that better evens out the students, it's easier to do in the science and the social studies. This year, there was an extra class of a foreign language, and we had to recreate the schedule to keep the groupings together in July, which threw off the science. And there was, there was more students there as well.
Any other questions on staffing? Sue, did you want to cover any of your operating expenses? I know you've got a highlight here for us, but?
Yeah. In terms of the operating expenses, and I'm looking at page four of the preliminary budget that you have, the largest, you can see the changes are reflected by the staffing changes on the top, and the additional teachers. On the supplies, there's an eight-hundred dollars difference in terms of trying to communicate better with our constituents. We've done a little more in guidance and administration of sending out letters, so the parents get them. At the middle school, we mail home standardized test scores, rather than put them in the backpacks. The textbooks-related instructional materials is a ten-thousand-dollar increase, and some of that is due to the consumables.
For the committee, just so, if you go to the front of your book, there's a summary page for each of the schools, and I think that's what Sue's referring to, when she says page four.
Page four, FY09, budget administration.
So, the one underneath, the one that says budget, and it's the fourth page in.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
The Hartford, Storytown consumables, and the King of Math consumables is, that in itself is six-thousand-three-hundred dollars of consumables for grade-five. And the Storytown consumables are for five and six, that's eleven thousand dollars. So, those, the foreign language consumables, and then that leaves approximately eight-thousand dollars for things such as Time for Kids, Kids Discover, and curriculum supports of that nature. That's the largest increase. The rest is just a little bit more increased cost of things.
Questions, additional questions for Sue? Okay. Why don't we move to next, Chris?
Jeff?
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Sorry about not having that copy here.
That's all right. And as we said to your compatriots last time, we reserved the right to cross-examine in the later term. Surely will be, as we have additional questions working through. As you know, the overall request is eight percent school-wide, and that will, it has to be worked on. And as we're working through that, we may need you to come back and spend a little more time with us, so, thank you. Jeff, where would you like us to go first?
I have one new request, and I guess I'll start with staffing, even though it doesn't fall, I guess, in the staffing.
Do you want us to go, Chris, to the FHS page, or do you want us to stay up and go to page five of the, where are we going to be?
I would say, I don't have a number here, but the budget proposed from Foxborough High School, beginning with the membership into the virtual high school.
Okay, so that's under the tab for Foxborough section. Okay. All right. Just so we're all on the same page.
The new request that I have, and I mentioned it a couple times, is the membership into the virtual high school. And again, I bring this forward, because I think it's an opportunity to push the AP program, because of the number of AP courses that they offer, honors courses that they offer. It'll also help with our elective problem to be able to get potentially fifty slots for our students to, again, work through the virtual high school. The problem, and why I'm presenting it, is if we're going to implement it for next year, we have to make some, some quick assessments by, actually, probably by January, because by February, we have to commit to the virtual high school for membership and training. And what the training would involve is a faculty member would be selected to teach the virtual high school course, and we would need a site coordinator. So, it's thirty-five-hundred dollars for an instructor training fee, and it's fifteen-hundred dollars for site coordinator fee, and it's sixty-five-hundred dollars for membership. So, we're looking at about eleven, twelve thousand dollars to introduce that into the budget next year, if that's the wish of the school committee.
See, this, to me, is a great example of where the nonprofit educational foundation that we like to establish would come in to fund for our students some things like this, a new program for a couple of years, get it off the ground, see that it works, see that it's successful. And when it is successful, then build that back into the budget. And, you know, so, we, we should be looking, I think, from two perspectives. We know we're going to, we're going to launch the fundraising, and so, you know, we ought to have some degree of confidence as to a minimum amount of money we can raise. And so, if an item like this doesn't make the budget cut, we think, I think we ought to bring this to the educational foundation as a grant request for a one- or two-year period of time, whereby that group, our group that raises the money, would be able to fund that for a couple of years. And so, as, the reason why Martha and I have been pushing to get it up and running is the sooner we raise the money and have it in the bank, the sooner we can start taking grant requests from programs like this and allow us to really make a difference in the community. So, I think that we should, this is an important item. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, that's really what I'm moving forward with for this year. I think it's important, under vision for future budgetary considerations, I just want you to understand where I'd like to head as far as the thought process for Foxborough High School. I won't belabor the world language piece, I already explained that in the, in the budget proposal. I think the next one is, I'd like to create a math and English helping areas to begin with, kind of on the line, along the lines of the academic support areas. And what I would like to do is, and again, I present it, because it may be a negotiating item when the time comes with the teacher union about how to implement this particular program. In my former district, what we did is our teachers did this particular duty in lieu of duties, so that it was really a six-teaching period, if you will, for the teachers. So, I think the teachers are somewhat receptive to it, because I kind of presented an overview to the faculty, but it, but the problematic piece they were concerned with is how many kids constitutes a duty. And I couldn't give them that answer, because I don't know if period five is going to be twenty-five kids coming every period, as opposed to period two, where there's twelve kids coming, or four kids coming. It could be as simple as not understanding a problem and going down the hall to that teacher that's available and working with them. Two, again, another way to incorporate maybe our remedial pieces, if there's two or three students in a particular section, rather than dedicate the teacher just for that MCAS section, we can combine the MCAS section with the helping area, so it'll allow us to work with special ed students, regular ed students, and maybe we even, you know, squeeze a class in there. And I think it's a dynamic environment, where you have kids who have problems with AP Calculus, working with kids that have problems with Algebra I Part I. I think it's a, it's a good dynamic. And so, I'm not sure what the cost would be, because, again, there's several ways you can go. You can remove the teacher's duties and use the faculty in lieu of doing the daily school duties, whether it's study hall, whether it's cafeteria duty, whether it's monitoring. You can remove partial duties and receive a stipend for the work. You can hire two teachers, instructor of the day, so that everyone has a helping period. And, again, depending on the class size, you can, you can weave a small MCAS class, or MCAS remedial class into that helping area. So, there's a few different ways, a few different scenarios that you can go. So, that would be, you know, a consider, a financial consideration down the road, and with the contract coming up, if something appears palatable, maybe we can go in that direction. I was thinking- I was thinking small time, and Mr. Harrington was thinking big time when I said discretionary fund, and I was looking for easily a thousand bucks. And Mr. Harrington was looking for a big buck. So, and I'll throw that out, I'd be happy to provide time resources to make that work, and just as long as you give me a thousand bucks down the road, that would be appreciated. And then the last piece is we're moving towards the NEASC evaluation process again. You know, it seems like yesterday, it seems like wherever I go, it follows me, but two thousand, two thousand and eleven is the visitation. And we can't do, we can't do, we can't do justice in just utilizing our faculty during school time, we just run out of time. So there's going to be a give and take about using professional development days, school time, and after-school time to try to make that process work. And the reality of it, and I guess the honesty of it, is I've kind of chaired the piece for the last eleven years at both districts, and it really isn't a piece that the principal should chair, he should be used as a resource. And really, it's about your faculty, and it's about them following through on initiatives and making sure that they're doing what they say they do. And I think it's an important ownership piece that, it's short money, but again, it's money well-spent to, again, meet the standards and the descriptors of the NEASC process. I mean, it is a bear, and there are a lot of descriptors to, and mandates, if you will, to meet, but if you can do what you say you do, I think you get a pretty good schooling process. So that's our goal. So again, next year, I think we have to consider a few dollars, you know, towards the NEASC. So that's really under personnel. As far as accounts are concerned, under the school leadership account, that's up seven thousand dollars. Five hundred of it is an increase in NEASC dues, and the other sixty-five hundred would be if we chose to go with the virtual high school, we put it under membership of school leadership. So that's the gain in that area, if you will. The next area is textbooks and related software. We're up about ninety-four hundred dollars. And there's increases in four areas as far as textbooks are concerned. One is our special ed textbook. We feel that we should, well, we need to update versions of our special education books that we have. Our English textbooks, we're trying to get everyone, well, there's three textbooks in English, and we're trying to get everyone to use the same version of the textbooks. Couple that with our bubble of our junior class, the last couple of classes that have graduated, we've had about two-hundred-and-ten, two-hundred-and-five students. This one has about two-hundred-and-thirty. So as they move, we need to get the necessary resources for those twenty extra students as well. And then you're talking about duplicate books sometimes and replacement of lost books. So it seems like exorbitant monies, but really, when you're talking about the replacement pieces, you're talking about, you know, twenty-five, thirty different courses and replacing two or three books per course. So it's small money times the twenty-seven to thirty classes that you have. In the textbook piece, would also like to update our business law books. So we're looking at fifty additional books at twenty-seven-hundred dollars. We have a nineteen-ninety-eight version right now, and it was ten years old, and I think that would be a good change. And we have a nineteen-seventies version of our computer drafting textbook, which would be a seven-hundred-dollar piece. Again, it's not a new adoption, we're just looking to update the current book that we utilize. So when you add those four areas, those are the big-ticket pieces of the ninety-four hundred dollars for textbook and software.
Just a question, a couple of questions. Paul, we used to have an account under revolving accounts. That was a book account where if people lost books, they would pay, et cetera. I don't see that on our list here. Do you know roughly how much that has in there?
Less than fifteen thousand. It's generally an account that doesn't build up large balances because we...
Right. The reason I ask is that when we look at the textbooks, we have a large balance in our special school account that we've built up over the years. We also have ten or fifteen thousand in that book account. So as we're looking at funding the textbooks, we should also be looking at some of those revolving accounts that have been built up, like the lost book account or the whatever damaged book, and using some of that. Because as we, as we look to balance the budget this year, I will encourage the committee to look to the, to the revolving accounts to some degree for non-recurring kinds of things. You know, we have used the revolving accounts more in the last two years than probably in the number of years before that. We've been judicious. We've been using it, I think, for very legitimate reasons. And there is still, in those accounts, this year, the, this year will have gone from about one million two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand to Paul's estimating by the end of '08 to one million sixty-five. So we'll have used about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand net out of those revolving accounts, which I think is very prudent. So the balance is going down, but the balances will still be over a million, a lot of that being special needs. So we're going to have to look at some of those revolving accounts to look at some of the budget issues this year. So as we look at some of these book accounts, let's remember that other revolving account.
And the next increase is in general supplies. We're up eleven thousand six hundred dollars. As the budget progresses, I think we'll have a better handle, we may be able to reduce a little bit there. And I'll give you an example. Biggest increase is our science where Mr. Sharf that there is asking for forty-three-hundred dollars increase. Currently, we had a budget of about seventeen thousand, and we're down to five thousand dollars, and we're only halfway through the second quarter. And most of that money is for lab purposes or the biologies, the chemistries, et cetera. So again, it was a guesstimate, and so we may end up saying at the end that we, you know, would have a surplus and we wouldn't need that much money, but it's, I guess, a good faith estimate of where we think we'll be for next year with forty-three hundred. So that's our largest increase. In our industrial arts area, again, we held on purchasing supplies last year, we were in pretty good shape this year. You know, we've gone two years with what we've had. So they're all little incidentals, you know, the sandpavers, the blades, the glue, the safety glasses. I mean, just thinking, you have a industrial arts here in your home, all those little knickknacks that you have, of course, I don't know how to use them, but they add up. And so we're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars in expenses for that particular area, fifteen hundred in our consumer science because of the nature of work that they're doing in the kitchen areas, and fifteen hundred dollars in general supplies. We think our paper supply will hold out, which is the largest portion of our budget, and we reflect an extra fifteen hundred. We think that's a good guesstimate. Again, we'll have a better handle, you know, a few months down the road when we see where our paper is, and once we get there. So those are the four of the bigger ticket items in our general supply account.
Just another question, Paul. We had a revolving account for bus rental, did we not?
Yes.
Okay, because I didn't see that. Is it called off-duty transportation?
Yes.
Okay. So when we look at, for instance, a request for twenty-five hundred dollars for transportation for math and debate teams, again, that may be one where we look at off-duty transportation to kind of fund some of that. So I don't know if the principals have access to all the revolving account information, but I would like them to work with administration to see where it would be prudent and where it would make sense. Since we do earn, in some cases, when people rent the buses, we earn a little bit more than our cost, some of that could be used to take care of the math and the debate team and their transportation. Okay?
We chip a little bit away at different areas. It's going to make a difference.
That's correct.
I like your idea.
Yeah. So we just need to, you know, digest, be creative, go through account by account and work with you on that.
That's pretty.
Questions for Jeff? I'll start with Kate.
Quick question.
Sure.
I know we really don't want our life cycle on our textbooks to be ten years, and I hear that the business books are at that mark. But I also know that the review for the business curriculum won't be until, is it 2010? Do they start in 2009 but finish in 2010? On the strategic plan, but my only question, you know, if you waited that long, that's such a popular course, I'd say, you know, absolutely go for it, but is, do we think that that might be the book or, you know, that they may come out with another book or another...
I can answer in general. I think that's a good question because if, there are some needs that sometimes make sense to fill, even if you're two years away from a review, because things aren't going to change. I have some things on my list when we all met that it's not the year for the review, which happened two years ago, but you didn't fill, you didn't even fill that need. So sometimes we do make out-of-purchase, purchases that are out of adoption cycle if it makes sense and we're sure it's not going to change. I'm not sure if that's one of them, but that's something we could discuss. Actually, Jeff and I have meetings with each department head individually tomorrow morning and Thursday.
Could we put that on the list? Because I'm all for it, but I'm not the educator here, and I'd love to know that we map that.
We're clear on that.
Anything that's been recommended is an updated version, they're comfortable with the text they have, and we're not looking for a new adoption. And that's why I put them, certainly if the budget review is the way to go, we can go that way too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate?
Martha?
Martha? All right, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Next up is Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Where would you like us to go in the book?
Well, just things that are important to me, that's all. So if you go to District Wide, I'm just, I'm going to talk about a few of the things that are items that are, I think are under working line. So you would be under District Wide.
It's almost at the back of the book.
Yes. And some of them, Mr. Jackson can explain more than I could, curriculum expenses, out-of-state travel, those aren't things that in the past five weeks I've been involved in. I think those are minor things.
Not any out-of-state travel yet, then?
No. Once sometime in my lifetime, hopefully there will be, but no. Let's see, the third one down, consultants for out-of-district activities. That has gone up a little bit in the bulk of that, almost eight thousand dollars, about roughly seventy-five hundred will be for the AP institutes for next summer. So teachers who teach advanced placement classes really need to go to the institute, which is a week-long institute, to make sure they understand the rigor, the standards, the expectations for AP classes. We did send one person last year, but we have about five people that need to go next summer, and that's the cost of that. So that explains the increase.
Well, I have a question. You said we sent one person this year, and there's thirty thousand on the budget, and you want to send five next year, and there's forty-one on the budget. Does that mean...
No, no, the increase of, the eleven thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollar increase, seventy-five hundred of it is AP institutes period, which we never had in the District Wide budget beforehand. The way I understand it, we're funding the AP institutes is if, if we have the money, we took it from something. So we, I think that it's so important that we've already asked, who is it that teaches an AP class and hasn't gone to the institute for next summer? So I've already met with the department heads, we know we have five people, roughly one in each department, roughly. So that is a cost that we should acknowledge and budget specifically. So that, that's what the cost increase in that line item represents.
And the other five, there's five thousand there for the training for virtual high school.
I'm sorry, for virtual high school?
That's covered in there, too.
That wasn't in Jeff's?
The six thousand dollars for the membership fees and principal's office, other five thousand for the training is in this account.
Okay, but I thought Jeff had eleven in his.
No, I had sixty, sixty-five.
I thought you said there was eleven thousand four hundred and fifty.
Eleven, eleven-five in total.
Eleven-five in total. Your eleven-five included, sixty-five hundred for membership.
And then you and Paul get the other five.
And I've got the other five in professional development.
Okay.
Tuition reimbursement and for ed assistants, nurses and teachers, I think that's self-explanatory. Most of the four questions, in case it would be. Textbook adoption, we were going to go for now with the same figure that we had in this year's budget with the addition of ten thousand dollars, which was a move, the U.S. history is grade ten U.S. history, which will be a new course, moved to a new grade level. Jeff had that in his high school budget, but since it's a new adoption, it really belongs in the District Wide adoption budget. So I believe Mr. Jackson shifted over from the high school budget to the District Wide The backup on the specific textbook adoption, we're a little early for. We had one meeting where we fed a lot of information. I have all the information about what we actually need, which is different from what we can actually afford. So that's what our meetings are about in the next come, in the next few days, is that we're going to look at all the requests for both textbook adoption and curriculum development and try to decide what can we do this year with the money that we currently have left in the budget? What can we do next year with the amount of money? And then what's going to have to be put off a year or maybe even two years out? I do have the laundry list, but it's a lot more than this year and next year's budget combined.
Right. Again, another potential topic for our educational, nonprofit educational fund, raising money that can be used for some of these programs that all have an eight- or ten-year lifecycle.
Right. But right now, I mean, as you know, you have a six-through-twelve math review going on meeting this afternoon, they're a good team, working hard. You have a K-through-twelve science review team. If you just look at the cost of a six-to-eight math adoption and the science needs alone, I mean, the six-to-eight math adoption is probably going to cost you approximately seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, we have sixty in this year's, and that doesn't, that isn't just for math. I think it was only one grade level in there for math. You'd only have sixty in for next year, and that doesn't, that wipe out either this year or next year and not include anything else. You do need the new social studies textbook at the high school. If you just look at the science, the predicted science needs, based on the review, that committee was a good group of people, we're projecting that elementary will cost us about twelve thousand dollars, perhaps if they just go with sort of beefing up what they currently have, we're not even talking new textbooks. Middle school science is likely to cost you between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars, and high school science is approximately twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars as well. So you do have a lot of textbook needs that naturally should follow the review cycle that you had started here and that we're right in the middle of, but the money, the numbers don't quite match. So we, for now, we went through the number that was in last year's budget, but, you know, for me, I need to get a process going here that the number, it might be more than we need, what we've been working with might be more than we need some years, it might be less than we need some years. So we're trying to be very specific with the backup, and that doesn't include some of the other areas that there are some needs in that are smaller. We talked about the family consumer science courses, they currently don't have a textbook, and while that's short money, it's still about sixteen hundred dollars. So there are a lot of little needs that add up to another big chunk. So our next few days, Jeff and I are meeting with the department heads, and then I'll meet with the K-three coordinators to identify what priority can these go in, and then we're going to meet as a whole team and come to consensus about that. Okay. And that's about all for the things that come under curriculum and instruction.
About the collaborative special programs, it's up ten thousand.
That is for school to career.
That's school to career, okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that, from my understanding, that was an area that wasn't in the final budget last year and that was funded and that we put in for the preliminary budget issue.
Right, that wasn't oversight last year. Questions for Jeff?
Under student insurance, I'm not quite sure why we, this is necessary, if everybody is supposed to have insurance in Massachusetts. What is this, what is it for?
It's excess liability insurance above and beyond.
Okay, so liability, not health, okay. All right.
Who is covered with this insurance?
Students.
All right, can you just explain the program for a minute?
No, I can't.
Okay, can you with another need?
Yeah, yes, yes. It's, we haven't paid this year's premium. We're working with our current MIA, the carrier that handles most of the town's insurance to really ascertain, is this a program that we really need to go forward with?
I think that's the question. Who's really the beneficiary of this?
We haven't paid the premium this year. At this point, we're still having discussions with the town's carrier to decide if this is something to go forward with.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Just a quick one. We've talked at different times about, and it's been stated here, we were going to continue Terranova, then we weren't and whatnot. And again, not to put pressure, we've got it in the budget. I guess I am putting pressure on you, ma'am. When will you be able to have a look at that? No, I think it's very important testing, it is very, very costly. Any idea when we may know?
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good question. We put it in the budget before, we had many discussions about it. We've already started to talk about it with the principals at our last administrative meeting, and we're doing an analysis at this point, time to figure out what value it has against two issues really. One is certainly cost, the other one is the amount of time it takes out of the instructional day. And so we're looking at all of that now, and before the budget is finished, we'll come up with a recommendation. So that's a January, that'll be a January discussion.
I get him, we're pressing on you, but I know we've talked this so many times, that may figure in.
Well, you see other towns that have moved away from the Terranova, so...
Yeah, we're analyzing a lot of different information that we're seeing, so.
But we still feel very strongly we're going to continue to offer the PSATs. But we still feel very strongly we're going to continue to offer the PSATs. Again, I think it's very important. I just, that's, we are going to continue that so that people at home understand that.
Yeah, PSATs, it's a, it's a real, as the label is, it's a great way for us to get an analysis of where students are and the kinds of things that we need to do in order to get them ready for college.
Okay, anything else for Deb? Then we'll ask Mr. O'Leary to join us, and we'll review plant operations, which again is towards the back of the book.
And what I'll do is we'll take each line item and I'll try to explain the changes. And then we'll set, first one, custodians.
You might be up at the front part of our book.
Page 16 in the printout.
Page 16 on, the front part of the book?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go back to the front, page 16.
There's 20 if we can read it. And guess six, okay. There's 14, 15, six. There we are.
Thank you.
Okay, first one is custodians. We have 18. Right now, that's a good number. We claim 550,000 square feet. So the increase there is 30,359. The reason for that is contractual obligations and stepping grade increases for the custodians. And again, 18 is a great number. We've been inspected by a couple of state agencies and some other groups, and everyone remarks at how clean our buildings are. So I think the men should be very proud of that. Second one is the stipend.
Mike, just on that note, we've, we've been bringing groups in periodically to recognize them. I think first we ought to bring in the custodians at some point because they do a tremendous job. They don't get a lot of praise, and I think that for a committee, we would like to personally thank them for the commitment they make to these buildings. They treat them like they're their homes, and they treat them with a great deal of respect, and they're spotless in most cases. So we ought to make arrangements to invite them to come and be congratulated for the hard work that they do.
I think that'd be a great idea. The second one is the stipend. It's an increase of $152. That's what we pay our lead custodians. We have two lead custodians that we pay a larger stipend to, one at the high school, one at the Hearn because of the larger staff. We pay half that stipend at the IGO because it's a smaller group. But again, these are custodian that will be the lead custodian in the evening. The next one is substitute or overtime for the custodians, there's no change in that. The other next one is the facility manager, which we have one, thank goodness. That's an increase of 2135. That's a cost to living increase. The next one is the painting program. We didn't increase that this year. It's something we implemented last year. This is the labor cost to do some painting. We do it with substitute people, with subs, with, with part-time help. Last year, we managed to get 23, 24 classrooms painted. We painted all the halls at the Hearn, and we got the first floor halls painted at the IGO. So we didn't use as much last year, but we'd like to keep it at this rate and do as much as we can in the summer and on vaca, summer, Christmas and February vacation. So that's the labor for the painting program. The next one is the maintenance mechanics, which there are four, three of which do maintenance in the buildings. I have one at the Hearn, I have one here at the high school, and then I have one who takes care of the three elementary schools. And the fourth one does our, all our athletics, takes care of our athletic equipment, does field preps for football, baseball, tennis, you name it. So he works for us, helps us in maintenance, especially the gyms and the equipment, but he also helps the athletic department doing, again, setups for games and practices. The next one is no change. That's just a small amount of overtime that we pay our mechanics. They get very little. In fact, most of that, $3,000, is eaten up at graduation. Now we'll get into supplies. My largest increase is this one, is the custodial supplies. It's up $8,000. The reason for that is you go into the grocery store and they say paper or plastic, well, I use both. And I'm not going to bore you again to tell you how much paper I use, but toilet paper, paper towels is up substantially because of the energy costs, and believe it or not, plastic bags. We use a tremendous amount of plastic bags to get rid of our trash. We put them as liners to keep the waste baskets clean. We use them in our large barrels. Costs of them have gone up substantially because of the energy costs. Again, they're petroleum-based, so that's my largest increase. Next one is heating of buildings. We actually are projecting a $19,000 decrease. Our gas costs, we have a new rate starting 11,108, which is a minimal increase, five and a half cents per therm. Our transportation costs are going to go up about 5%, but we're fairly comfortable with this number for two reasons. You'll see this in the electrical costs. The mad scientist here, Mr. Jackson, went back over, back to, to the year 2000. He pulled out every bill, got usages from the year 2000, every year per month for each building, all the way down the line for electricity and heat. And then we've taken our projections for this year, month by month, and he actually calculates our transportation costs, our, our generation costs for electricity, our transportation costs for that, our demand charges, et cetera. And then every month when the bills come in, he can hardly wait to see how our projections were to where we projected and how much we come in under. And if we come in under, then we see if we can free up some money that we know we've overprojected for that month, so that allows him to free up some money to use elsewhere. Oh, it's, it's a great thing that we.
It's that money to get the mail that's getting to us now.
It's amazing, but, but we're feeling confident in this moment, again.
Energy on it.
It's energy on it.
I see that Mr. Jackson's name is on this with you, but I'll ask you to answer it rather than him. But after that eloquent discussion of this process, when you look at the 2007, 2008 number of 361, 267, can you tell us what Mr. Jackson has tucked away in terms of variance for the current fiscal year? Not with you on the spot, but.
I wouldn't dare. It's, you know, again, we're at the mercy of the weather. I mean, if you look at last year actual for heat, $280,000. Last year was, was such a warm winter that we managed to shut buildings down completely over vacations and the evenings and so on. Last year was, was a great year to save on heating. November was great. I mean, our projections were so, I, I, the actual costs come in so much lower than our projections because November was such a cold month, well, December's killing us. It's been so cold now the last week and a half that whatever we saved in November, we're going to use in, in December, so.
So you're predicting the '07, '08 numbers look probably pretty right on, huh?
As of right now, they're pretty good. Yes, I mean, we, we'll change them every month as the bill comes in, so. So again, we're fairly comfortable with that $19,000 decrease. The next one is the utilities, electricity and so on. We figure only $837. We have a minimal charge there. We have a contract for our electricity. Our transportation costs are going to go up about 5%, but we figure we're going to offset that with the retrofit we did at the borough school. That's starting to show savings when we, we had the utility companies come in, put in motion sensors, T8 bulbs, electronic ballast and so on. So any increase that we have in the transportation costs will, should be offset by the borough savings in electricity, which we did notice a, a decrease. The next one is grounds expense. It grew up about $3,000, cost of fertilizer, cost of mulch, et cetera, et cetera. The next one, contracted services. We project about a $2,000 increase. That's all our testing, fire alarm, any repairs that we do on contracted service, all of our testing, water treatment, et cetera. So we're figuring about a $2,000 increase there. Next one, the maintenance program. A lot of that is supplies, light bulbs, ballast, plumbing supplies, everything we use to maintain the buildings. We're figuring about a $3,000 increase in that cost there. Next one is the painting program, $10,000. That's actually to buy the paint. We buy all the line paint for all our lines, although the highway department does all our lining for us and all our fields and so on. They do our parking lots, they actually stripe our parking lots for us, so we save the labor there. We purchase the paint, so that's no increase there. That will remain the same. The next one, maintenance is, there's no increase there. That covers dues, our organization dues, my license renewal, any travel. Last year, we spent $403. I guess I don't travel very far, so.
He's going to be traveling even less.
Even, yeah. I don't travel very far, I guess, for $403. So there's going to be no change there. Building security, $12,000, there's no change there. That covers the cost of our monitoring of all our alarm systems and so on, and any repairs or changes we make to our alarm system to all our buildings. And that covers it. Any questions?
Mike, I would just tell you that I got a call last week at home from someone who knew you from your days in the hospital, and he just wanted me to know how fortunate Foxborough was to have you in charge of our operations. I told him that I was quite aware of your talent and the ability that you've brought to the table to help us save thousands of dollars day in and day out, but it was very nice getting a call from someone who said, we are very fortunate to have you. And I said to him, not only we're fortunate to have you, but you've got a great team working for you, and your leadership has, has spurred that entire team to, to do levels as well, so.
I, I do. I, I, my men make me look very good. And you know, as, as men once said, if you enjoy your work, you'll never work a day in your life, so. But I do, I, I'm grateful to the people who work for me, boy, they, they make my job very easy.
While you're here, I'd also, at our last meeting, we thanked you, although you weren't here, for the tremendous work you've done in, in getting us where we are with state assistance on the rehab of this high school. You have put in a tremendous amount of effort along with Mr. Jackson. Since you're here this evening, I would like to personally recognize you and thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you. If it wasn't for Paul and his, his writing expertise, I think that put us ahead of the class. It was, we talked to the people who came in from the state, and that's the one thing they said, that, boy, it was precise, right to the point, easy to read and so on. And I think that helped us because they said a lot of the reports went in were rambling. They didn't understand what people wanted. They were asking for everything under the sun, and ours was very precise, and, you know, I think that helped us go to the. If you had asked me six months ago, what were our chances of getting money from the state, I would have said it was slim and none. Now I feel pretty good. I don't know if we'll get it, but boy, to be down to the 83, the 83 that were chosen out of 400 and something, I think that's pretty good.
Absolutely. Any questions for Mike?
Questions?
Just many thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, the next item is transportation, Mr. Jackson. And where would you like us to go in this book?
Page 15, please.
Page 15, that's right.
Before I, before I talk about the dollars, I'd just like to frame up a little bit to give a sense of the magnitude of the service that we offer. In the morning, we currently are running eight high school runs, three charter school runs, 15 middle school runs, 15 elementary school runs for 41, total of 41 runs. And we use 15 buses to do those 41 runs. At noon time, we do 10 kindergarten runs. In the afternoon, we do 11 high school runs, 15 middle school, three shuttles between the charter school and our elementary schools. Charter school students ride the elementary buses home, and then with 15 elementary runs for total of 44 runs. Four days a week, Monday through Thursday, we run three late runs, taking students that participate in after-school programs at the middle school and the high school at home. In Metco, we are, for I guess the third year in a row, we have changed the way we offer Metco late runs, and we currently offer one Metco late run on Monday, two on Tuesday, one on Wednesday, and two on Thursday, none on Friday.
None on Friday.
None on Friday, which coincides with the fact that we offer no late runs to our in-house students on Fridays. And we have contracted out our Metco bus to a contractor who provides the entire service. So we have currently 20 full-size school buses and six special ed vehicles. We have four special education drivers that drive eight hours a day for the 180 days, and some of them drive five weeks in the summer to handle in-town transportation for our spin programs in the summer. So to go to the actual page, the contractual increase that you see on bus driver salaries is just that it's a negotiated settlement. We projected substitutes optimistically at a savings of $5,400. The increase for the transportation assistant contractual, driver training, school bus routing, money that you spend, and it's not only driver training and bus routing in the summer, but it also covers the cost to wash all the buses. We wash, we actually have drivers that we pay and they wash the buses inside and out and continually clean graffiti, gum, and really make a big difference in terms of the inside cleanliness of the bus, which is something we started two years ago, which I'm very pleased with the results. The buses are much, much cleaner than they've ever been before.
Paul, why the big increase though from 6,000 to 13?
I, we took a look at what we've been spending historically, and that every year we're taking a hard look at the routes, and we made major modifications last year where we went from 16 runs on the middle school and the high, and the middle school and the elementary school down to 15. And this past summer, we did it again. We did not, we made some minor changes. We certainly aren't in a position, and I don't think we will be next year, to reduce the bus fleet any further. However, we're trying to work to make the routes as efficient as possible given the cost of fuel, so that we take a look at that. And every year, the current kindergarten student goes to grade one, and then grade four goes, goes to grade five and so forth, so that we have a shift of population, which necessitates a review of the bus routes, which historically hasn't really been done. And we've started to do that to try to stay on top of it.
Now, Paul, Katie and I have talked to you a couple of times about cameras on the buses, and we've said we don't be really busy in working all that. I, I don't see any dollars in here for that. And I, I know we have talked about the off-duty transportation account, which has 50, projected at $50,000 in at the end of the year. When are you going to be able to present to us the thoughts, the ideas and the suggestions about cameras, cameras on the school buses?
I actually had a conversation with the driver this afternoon, and they actually had come into the office to ask me about the cameras on the buses. And I said, do you want a job? And so this driver's taking on the responsibility of starting to do some of the groundwork and the legwork, to then sit down, have a discussion so that we can come with a recommendation. So we actually talked about it today.
So would you anticipate in the first quarter of '08 coming back to us?
The first quarter of '08.
January, February, or March in '08?
I would say April. I'd like to be able to come back in April and have a discussion about it.
All right, so Wendy, would you just make a pending note for March, and then we'll remind Paul that April's coming quickly and.
I'll be walking the plank.
On the agenda. Because I think we'd really like to, if we're going to go there, we would like to have them in, in time for the start of school next year. Okay, go ahead.
Special trips, no change. That's the money that primarily is used by the music department for a lot of the movement of the different chorus groups, jazz ensembles, band, to various programs. We do do some in-town transportation where we bring the eighth grade up to the high school and then bring the fourth grade over to the middle school. That line covers that. The special needs in district is the transportation for the drivers for the special needs buses. Summer transportation, monitors, and then crossing guards. We sat down and re-projected our crossing guards number, and that number also includes substitutes, so it's an all-in number in terms of salaries. Contracted services.
Paul, just speaking on the crossing guard issue, just for the committees to viewpoint. When you drive down where the charter school is, where we had the accident where the person was being, crossing guard was hit, there are no visible signs on the road saying, "School area, drive slow." There are no signs on the road that say, "School area, drive slow." There are no flashing lights that say, "Speed reduction." There are no flashing lights that say, "Speed reduced to 20 miles per hour when school's in session," any of that. So, all of that, we're in discussion with the town to see what we can do from a signage standpoint, whether it be road signs or painting on the street, or something that will help drivers better understand. Those that may not be familiar with the fact that the school there is off the road, there's nothing that would tell them that the school is off the road. Whereas, you know, driving past the high school, you have, you know, lots of different things. So, we just, we brought it up again last week, that we were having that discussion. I wanted the committee to know, we're continuing to have that dialogue with the town about increasing the protection for the crossing guard of that particular area.
Just a random question. Are we required to give them, to give the charter school a crossing guard? Or is that because we have students going to the Igoe School, that we have somebody down there?
Actually, that crossing is paid for by the charter school. It has, it's not part of our budget.
Okay.
But the safety of that individual is something we should all be worried about.
We have some serious issues in terms of, we have three buses, especially, it's really an issue in the afternoon. But we have a serious issue in the afternoon, where we have three buses that try to go into that charter school to pick up the students, to then bring them to our three elementary schools, where the students are distributed to our elementary buses and then go home. With the amount of traffic and congestion and the way people park, that was also a conversation this afternoon, that it has been a problem for a number of years, and it just seems to get worse as the enrollments at the charter school increase. It becomes more and more of a problem. And we actually were over there the first week of school, trying to lend some assistance in terms of suggestions on what could be done to alleviate some of it. And it's, the fact that the crossing guard got hit out of the driveway is just the tip of the iceberg.
Well, I think, we must've had signage and whatever, when it was the Robinson Hill School, it probably all came down when the Foxborough Company bought that building for something else, and those helped out to put it back up.
That's my, that's my sense. As Larry said, we're working with the town to see if we can help influence that discussion.
You try to remember what it was like before, and I'm pretty sure it was all there, it just went away. Never came back, and the school came back.
So, and, you know, it's been there long enough that we shouldn't have it up there before then. And it's one of those things, unfortunately, sometimes an accident has to happen before people realize there's a problem. So... Any questions for Mr. Jackson on the transportation?
Just the last two items that show an increase, projected increase for fuel escalation clause, as well as the actual increase for the contract, for their Metco contracted run in and out of Boston every day. And gasoline, we budgeted $2.30 a gallon for our fuel this year. We're currently paying $2.60, been paying $2.60 pretty much since this summer. And that reflects an increase to $2.80. So, it's really an increase of 50 cents a gallon over what we had previously budgeted in the '08 year. Although, and I will tell you that the gallons that we budget are down slightly. With the reduction of the 16 to 15 buses, as well as the way the routes were redone in a more efficient manner, we've actually seen a drop in the number of gallons that we anticipate using. And we're running right now about 300 gallons less year-to-date, over what we had budgeted. And our budget for next year is actually slightly down over the budget for this year. But in terms of the gallons that we're projecting that we'll use...
Yeah, we'll be very proud of you.
The prices. So, that kind of wraps up transportation.
Questions for Paul?
John, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Chris, who are we gonna have at the next meeting, from a budget standpoint? Do you want to just refresh the boards' number?
Yeah, well, you can probably help me with this, too. We've gone through all the schools, so we have, and we've had special ed, special education. So, technology, art, music...
Art, music, phys ed.
Phys ed.
Technology, media.
Right.
And I think that's it.
Right.
Athletics.
Athletics.
Can't lose athletics.
Right. So, that'll take place, the first meeting in the chamber.
Okay. Before we move on to the special ed director search, I would just like to ask the committee, if you have any questions. Paul submitted, as of December 6th, an analysis of the revolving accounts. So, if anyone had a question on the revolving accounts, I'd like to have you address that with Paul now. As I said, when I went through it, it looks as though we're gonna use about $178,000 this year. Although, keep in mind that that's before the SED issue that we've talked about the last two meetings. The SED could take an additional $276,000 out of that, which would be, in addition, would be 22 percent. So, we're watching that account pretty closely, but we have that special needs account, revolving account, that has been used to cover, you know, some of these ups and downs. So, if you have questions, feel free to ask Paul, otherwise, we'll move on to the next item.
Paul, any questions? There is one thing I'd like to point out.
Yes, sir.
The, and I should've made a note on the sheet, which I didn't. On the summer school...
Summer school, yes.
You alluded to a $100,000 balance.
$101,540.
The summer school, there's a timing issue with this account. We pull tuitions in for the summer school program predominantly in June, which means the money goes in and shows a significant balance for July 1st. And then, but the bill isn't paid for that program until July, August timeframe. So, that when you look at this, you look at the balance of 91, that needs to be reduced by the 53. If you try to keep apples to apples, you'd reduce it by 53, which would give you around a $40,000 balance. And the $68,000 projected deposit is what I anticipate taking in, in June. So, that the $100,000 is really an overstatement in terms of the availability.
So, it's really close to $40,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a timing issue for the money coming in and then going out.
But the $40,000 isn't the timing, the timing is the other 60?
Yes.
Okay.
Forty, is about a $40,000 available balance.
Okay. Chris, you want to update the committee on the process for the special education director search?
I do, thank you. We've advertised the position, the Director of Special Education opening, that we announced last week with Cindy Benelli's announcement that she's retiring at the end of the school year. We advertised a position in the Boston Globe yesterday. It'll, that same ad typically goes, will be in tomorrow's Globe as well. We're also putting an ad in Education Week, which is a national weekly that typically advertises openings from around the country for administrative positions. So, that will give us more of a national reach for people that may be interested. And then, we'll put it on various websites, we're letting different groups know, the Superintendents Association, the School Committee Association, the School Personnel Association is an association for special educators, and we'll be, we'll be letting them know about the posting. So, we should have a pretty broad reach, I think, in terms of people understanding that the opening exists. We put a closing date, we opened it for a month. Part of it is, obviously during the holidays, we wanted to give it a couple of weeks after the first of the year for people to, to send in information, to send in material to us. During this time, we'll be developing a search committee. We'll be doing this, I've, it seems like I've run more of these than I care to mention over the years. But we'll be running it very much the same way that we ran the assistant superintendent opening, although we'll spend a little bit more time on this, since we were constrained by some time during the summer. So, we'll be spending a little bit more time. So, I'll be putting together a search committee. Typically, it's 12 to 15 members. I will ask Larry tonight as the chair to get two names of school committee members to me.
I would tell you, I'd like to ask Katie and Bev to be the two representatives for the school committee.
Great, yeah, absolutely.
Bev, you do?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll have a central office administrator, or two principals, probably one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level in middle high school, or vice principals at the secondary level. I talked to Todd Kaiser, we'll be following up with him this week, about teachers that Kodo Shoda would like to be involved. I will be contacting Margaret Chason from the Special Education Parent Advisory Council about parent interests. I'll also be talking to the PTO leaders that I will be meeting with next week, and let them know that we have, will be interested. I'll be looking at names from them. Community member, I go back and forth, depending on, someone may be interested from the community in being on the search. The charge of the committee is, I think, very, very simple, although it's a lot of time and a lot of effort, is to send me to interview as many people as, as the committee would like. Can interview every single person that applies, if they'd like. I'm not necessarily recommending that, but, and then to send me three to five unranked finalists, and then I then begin the process. So, I expect that we'll get started, the search committee will be put together, and we'll get started as soon as that posting closes. So, the week of January 14th will be the first date for the initial meeting. Generally, at that meeting, I chair that meeting and talk about the process or the potential process. And at that time, the committee will decide how many people to interview, will start to develop questions for the interview process. Generally, that screening committee period takes three or four weeks, which is pretty typical. Come back a week later after looking at all the applications, and then, and then decide on the people that they'd like to interview. Schedule the interview at times. I recommend, you know, interviewing no more than three people in any particular session. And so, over two or three or four evenings or a Saturday, whatever people would like to do, we're open to that. So, that timeline, and then getting the information back to me. I then interview the finalists, check references. Occasionally, I've done a site visit of candidate, particularly if the candidate's from Hawaii or a nice area. I think we'll do a site visit. And then, I will be coming back to you with, because this is your appointment, school committee, this is school committee appointment. So, I'll be coming back with recommending one name to you, and we'll be working that process. I'm hoping to finish certainly by mid-March, and I'll accelerate it, depending on the pool, depending on who we might be competing with. And I'll get a sense of that as we go along, and we'll move the process. But I think the process itself is an open process. I've had good success in other districts with this process. We've had great success here in the summer with this process, so we'll be using the same, we'll be using the same one, so...
Questions? All right. I'd like to go back to the approval of the minutes for December 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm with you.
Motion by Kate, second by Martha. Discussion of the minutes.
You're happy with the changes, whatever you...
Yes. Everybody comfortable? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, other matters? Chris?
Yes, in your packet, I included the letter, the official letter, from Massachusetts School Building Authority, that lets us know that the board, their board, voted to invite us to collaborate with MSBA in conducting a feasibility study for the potential repair of Foxborough High School. So, I wanted you to have that on the record. They certainly have coached it in language that doesn't give us the money today. But we'll, it's a new process. As I've mentioned, it's a new process. We're learning as we go along. I agree with Michael Larry and Paul Jackson when they said that, that they were impressed with our statement. And as I mentioned last week, Larry, Jim Frascher, Andy Gaylor, Randy Scollins, Paul, and Mike, and I will be attending a meeting on December 20th, and we'll be learning more as we go along and reporting back to this committee. The other, the other one, just briefly, we have a draft of Foxborough High School from Metco that our administrative team here, and I'll be actually working with them this week, is looking at the study of this building, safety purposes. And they've committed to us that we'll be in a final phase in early January. So, I think that, that's moving along.
Paul, can you give us an update? I don't know if you can legally, but the issue that started all this last spring, is prosecution going forward in that case, or can you give us any update on that student that was involved with calling in the false alarms? I don't, if you can't, just say you can.
I'll look into it.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Just curious, 'cause I, there was stories in the paper, they identified the person, and appropriate action was being taken. I don't know, I didn't know what that action is or where it stands, and I just thought it would be important to know. Anything else, Chris?
No.
Katie?
Yeah.
Martha?
I was fortunate enough to go to a high school concert the other night. And if anybody has any question as to what are the caliber of music program is, at the rate we're going, we not only could add on, for the cable people, but we could add on to our stage, because pretty soon, we're not gonna have enough room to put all the musicians up there. I watched Mr. Massey try to walk around the front, I was like, "Don't follow him." It was, it was very impressive, when the student choir sang, and, you know, every once in a while, you see something on there that you recognize, and for them to do their rendition of Joyful Joyful, which was in the Sisters Act, it was unbelievable. And they got a standing ovation, it stood everybody else, but it was very, very impressive.
And it's being rebroadcast on cable, so those of you that didn't see it live, you can watch it on cable. Bev?
Just a wonderful new hire as our young choir director. And I think it is very, very exciting that we have former Foxborough High School students returning to become part of the faculty. They know, they were students here when FHS was at the top of the Hockamont Green, and they will help us take it back there. And to close out the year, your committee is very proud of you, Mrs. Larry, so we framed you. I won't present, I'll give it to you.
This is like a math scientist.
What a play on words.
Congratulations, Melissa, on your award. And to whichever fits you, cool Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, or Merry Christmas. But whoever you are, wherever you are, have a wonderful New Year.
Thank you, Bev. Kate?
I just want to confirm that we will have on the next meeting, prior to our athletic directors' presentation on athletics, we will have an update in the issue resolved on athletic uniforms and equipment.
I'm sure they'll be bringing forward, that's their job.
Well, no, I would like, I think we need to take a look at what's the same set of facts, because I think we'll be very surprised. The second thing I just want to bring up is, if my colleagues still agree, each year, we've also gotten for regular education, an update on out-of-district placements, so that we know how we're doing. It's just another barometer. We didn't ask you, and we put a lot of pressure on you, so my question is for the colleagues, 11% of our students leave to go elsewhere, and we keep track of that number as part of our accountability. Do we still think that that's important? And if so, I think we just, I think what we did tonight with the enrollments is something that we've had to do for months. And this was something, along with that, we always took a look at those numbers. Is that still meaningful? I think it is, but I want to check with each of you.
We've always brought it up at some point, so...
So, I think, you know, we don't want to overburden Chris, but I think that's something we need, and it's based on the October data. That snapshot in time is always that data, along with the class sizes, class sizes. So, I would love to see us have...
Why don't we look at right after the first of the year?
Just be, be specific, I'm not sure what...
I can make a copy of it. Each year, we're reporting, this was last year's, okay? In fact, we had more specific, where it says, you know, 11% of our students move out of the system, and of that, 68%, here are the four, here are the places where they all go.
Bishopian.
Whether it be elementary, the charter school... Yeah, just the numbers, just as a snapshot, 'cause we take, we just like to have that as a snapshot, time to see, are we up, down, are we, you know...
One of the things we talked about, Chris, was actually surveying parents to try to better understand why they choose to pay the taxes they pay in town, and then they send their child to a private school. And understanding that through a survey instrument might help us in attracting. In some cases, for instance, we've talked about, at the high school level, a number of years ago, discipline was a big issue. And we've worked really hard to address that, and what we saw tonight, we heard tonight, some real progress is made there, as well as in the middle school. So, if a parent has the impression that there's an issue that's no longer an issue, by, by surveying, we'll be able to tell, how we, how do we do? One of your goals is around communication, so that's an important message to communicate. So, yes, if we can talk about that. Kate, do you have anything else? Martha, do you have something else?
Hi, Wendy, as far as the...
Paul, Jim Hattie delivered...
Jim Hattie delivered the revised policy manual to me on Friday, and I have a copy for each committee member after the meeting. The way we have set it up is it's all copied on yellow paper, so there won't be any confusion as to the original and what's been revised. You will notice that there, some of them, up at the top, have a hold on them, and those are the ones that the different administrators are looking into. So, there's no confusion as to why that hasn't been done yet, it's on hold. After the administrators working on getting all those together, they'll go back to MASC, and Jim Hattie will redo them, and then he will send those to us via approval.
So, the purpose of the two nights coming up is for the committee to get back together to talk about all the changes, get comfortable that all the changes that they thought were going to be made, were made.
Right.
Have a second chance to put forth any other comments or questions. And then, when that process gets closed, then we would go into a formal process where we have a first and a second reading. Is that correct?
The other thing is, if we have things that are on hold, certainly, it wouldn't hold up us doing a first and second reading on what we have.
Right.
And then, any of the particular holds, for whatever reason, we can certainly incorporate a first and second reading into our regular meeting.
Right.
So, I feel very comfortable that we can forge ahead with what we have at this point.
And there is a list of all, of the ones that are on hold, and who they went to for review, so you know.
Okay. If there's nothing else, it is nine forty-eight, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Katie, second by Bev, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everybody, and happy holidays.